Good evening, everyone. And welcome. This is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board. It is Monday, September 12, 2016 at 5:01 PM. I would like to call this meeting to order and request roll call, please.
Carpenter. Grineer.
Here.
Staten.
Here.
Cool. Bollig.
Here.
Budrow.
Here.
Brethauer.
Here.
Thank you. And our first item is one that we always enjoy, and that is the Item 3, Public Appearances, Item A, the swearing-in of Police Sergeant Luke Cass. I'll ask Chief Yule to make a few comments. Just stand there and look good for a minute, will you? I'm gonna sit over here.
At least stand there.
So, good evening. I know you're all are here for the oath of office ceremony, so we appreciate you being here for that. I'd like to welcome you for this ceremony to our promotional process for Sergeant Luke Cass. As many of you, especially the board, have heard me talk about the mission of the Police Department and the value we place on hiring the right people to achieve our mission, well, promoting officers to the rank of sergeant is no different. The sergeant position, in my opinion, is one of the most crucial positions in any organization, especially a police department. The Sergeant in the Oregon Police Department is tasked with many duties, to include patrol officer duties, supervising patrol officers to help maintain and deliver a high level of police services to the community, to take direction from leadership of the department, and to not only relay this information to officers, but to truly lead by example. Sergeant's position is a go-between for patrol to administration. In other words, they are the middleman, and it's not always being easy being in that position, as we all know. Sergeants are vital to the success of our organization. So, I want to commend Luke for his exemplary service thus far to the community and to the Police Department. He has been an informal leader on patrol and has already shown he's willing and able to handle almost any task that he's asked to do. During the promotional process, he demonstrated his knowledge of this position and impressed both interview panels, both inside and outside the organization. Well done. We are looking forward to your leadership, and I am anxiously waiting and watching for you to grow as a sergeant with our Police Department. In conclusion, the members of the Oregon Police Department are committed to working together as a team by being innovative, professional, and responsive to public safety concerns for our citizens. We have created an organization staffed by highly motivated, dedicated, and competent personnel, and we are pleased Luke has chosen to be a leader in our organization. So now, I will ask our Village Board President Steve Staten to come forward to administer the oath of office to Sergeant Luke Cass.
So, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I, Luke Cass, do solemnly swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America."
"I, Luke Cass, do solemnly swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America."
"The Constitution and laws of the State of Wisconsin."
"The Constitution and laws of the State of Wisconsin."
"The Charter, laws, and ordinances of the Village of Oregon."
"The Charter, laws, and ordinances of the Village of Oregon."
"The rules and regulations of the Village of Oregon Police Department."
"The rules and regulations of the Village of Oregon Police Department."
"And the law enforcement code of ethics."
"And the law enforcement code of ethics."
"And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a sergeant of the Oregon Police Department."
"And that I will faithfully discharge my duties of my office as a sergeant of the Oregon Police Department."
"I will assume my duties as of 9/12/2016."
"I will assume my duties as of 9/12/2016."
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anybody that you'd like to have with pictures, like them pictures with Luke, come on up. I see one young man back there. Okay, we'll go to Item B under Public Appearances. Item B, a discussion with board members and village residents regarding village possibly acquiring the former Methodist Church property at 249 and 267 North Main Street for a municipal building site. There are four items listed there. First is an overview of the property by our village planner, Mike Slavney. Then, board comments, discussion inputs, then public input, and then continuing discussion with village planner Mike Slavney at the September 19 board meeting. So, as I think you all know, this is an initial discussion. This is to kind of get some ideas out there, get some questions out there in preparation for the board meeting that we'll have next Monday. There are no decisions to be made tonight. It's informational and a chance to hear what's my ideas are. So, welcome, Mr. Slavney.
I'm Mike Slavney. I'm the village planner. I've been working with the village since the year 2000, and I was asked to present an overview of the old Methodist Church property. I've prepared a handout that's being passed around for the Village Board. There are extra copies up on the front table here, but I'm gonna go through it. I first collected the information about current assessed values for the property from the Dane County website. This site comprises of three different parcels under common ownership, and the total site area is about 2.7 acres. That's about 118,000 square feet. In total, the assessed value for the property is about $690,000. About 300,000 of that is for the land value, and about 390,000 of that is for the improvements on the land. This area is currently zoned in our two-family zoning district, our TR-6 district. It used to have planned development zoning, but that expired some time ago. And this area is designated planned neighborhood on our comprehensive plan future land use map, and that designation allows a variety of land uses, including institutional uses, which would include many indoor activity village buildings. As part of the civic campus plan, we're looking for sites for a long-range library and senior center, one that could be built relatively soon but would be large enough to serve the community for many years. And we had a space needs study done by an architectural firm that does a lot of this kind of work, and they projected a need for a senior center of about 16,000 square feet. And one common dimension is an 80-foot wide building, so that would be 80 by 200 square feet. And they projected a size of about double that for a future library. And on this site, that would probably mean going to two stories with more or less the same kind of footprint as a one-story senior center. So, what does that footprint look like on this property? We've got some room to work with. So, anticipation of that question, I laid that out here, and you can see that it fits quite nicely on the property, and there would be room for large setbacks with landscaping and quite a bit of room for surface parking. And it would really only require the main core area of the site, the big southern rectangle. That would leave the northern leg of the site for maybe some outdoor space, community gardens, or other kinds of landscaping features have been mentioned in the course of the last several months, as well as the need for additional stormwater management in the area. The northern part of the site, particularly the western border, is the lower part of the site. And so, just in terms of would something fit, the question is both the library and the senior center, as the needs have been projected by our architectural consultant, would fit well on that site. There would be room for adequate surface parking. There would even be a little bit of expansion room for a later addition if that was needed going to the north. If it was the library or going either to the north or up, if it were a senior center, how tall would that be? Well, libraries and senior centers have big rooms, and big rooms need taller spaces. For example, a typical modern commercial space has anywhere from 14 to 18 feet of floor-to-ceiling height. So, we'd be looking in the range of somewhere around 35 to 40 feet, probably for the floor-to-roof height. That would leave the western edge of the building partially exposed at the basement level, which could accommodate storage or even activity uses, although, you know, we caution against windows on the west side of any large building because of them heating up all times of the year. But because this neighborhood is well-treed, that may not be as big a concern as on a vacant site. To this date, in terms of our space needs study, we've made no recommendations as to any kinds of sites, but we have discovered that some of the sites we've been looking at have gone off the table. We're currently looking at a development proposal on the south side of Jefferson Street, where Paul Lynch had assembled properties across from the bank. And in our discussions with the owner of the bowling alley, he's indicated no interest in selling at this time. So, that took a number of our best options off the table. So, Mike asked me to look at this site to see if things would fit here. They do. One of the facilities we're looking at on the north edge of our downtown area. And with that, I've concluded my presentation. I'll take any questions from the board, if you have any. I need to leave the meeting today at 6:30, and I just want to give you a heads-up about that. I've got another commitment on the west side of the county.
One of the concerns that neighbors had was the scale of the project, and the setback was really very large, as contemplated by the design. Can you comment on that? Would that likely be less of a problem?
Well, this would be less of a problem, but this, either one of those buildings is going to have a footprint that is closer to the different senior developments that have been proposed on this site than they would be to any home in the area with or without the outbuildings, you know, like the garages on the site. This would be a significantly larger building, and because we have a little bit more room to work with, I think things could be done to break up the mass of the building. But when you look at total square feet, no matter how it's, you know, camouflaged or finessed, it'd be a substantially larger building than any other property on the block, and larger than the existing buildings on the site now.
Would it be higher than the existing old church? Do you know that yet?
I think, on average, yes, but not as tall as the tallest part of the church.
Okay.
And, you know, it'd be well within the height limitations of the zoning code, which measure halfway up a pitched roof. So, unlike a three-story building, a two-story building, even with taller floors, could be given more of a residential roof form, and, you know, there'd be some room to provide more interesting architectural details than we saw, I think, particularly on the last project that was proposed.
What would your recommendation be for the unused portion of the lot from Johnson down to wherever you would anticipate the northern expansion?
Right, so, I think that the northern leg of the property, which would be the skinny part of the property, would be available for stormwater management that would serve not only this property, but could potentially address ponding that occurs in the backyards of the homes, some of the homes in the area. And I think there would still be room left over for low-key open space kinds of spaces, you know, anything from a contemplation garden to a labyrinth or a community garden, you know, something very low-key daytime activity-oriented. Frankly, in the long, long run, depending on library usage, some of that outdoor area, and I'm talking, you know, 25 to 50 years from now, depending on parking load and how we were managing it, you know, it's good to have that kind of extra area. The stormwater would best go at the very northern part of the site, and the open space area would be between the core area where the building and main parking lots are and the stormwater area.
And I just heard you say library, and I know at points we were saying library, senior center. For my benefit, do you feel that the 32,000-square-foot library would fit on that site, or do you feel that that site's too small for... And 32,000, was that the right square footage, Nikki?
It's just that I would ballpark of that. I actually checked myself right before I came to see what did that study say, and it recommended a little bit more than that, 35,000. But it all depends on what we're actually able to build, and it sounds like there would be use of a partial submerged floor, which would take, could take a fair amount of that footprint.
Right. Right, so, I thought that 32,000 reflected the ballpark of the library. There was some, there was quite a bit of unassigned space in the space needs study, both for the library and the senior center. So, for the purpose of this, because it frankly made the math comparable, I just went with 16,000 and 32,000. I think the library would fit, and under typical parking demand, there's adequate room for a well-landscape parking lot on the site with a significant landscape border, you know, 25 feet densely planted in evergreens around the entire perimeter of that southern part of the site. If we wanted a more interesting building, then we'd have to compromise on some of those distances, just to provide for projections of the building that would add interest, particularly, you know, in that front section is viewed from Main Street.
Could you go with the library just one story instead of two stories?
You could, but then you couldn't fit any parking unless you fit it under the building, and because both of the cost involved with underbuilding parking, the cost of ventilating a parking area of that large, you know, we just typically don't see those for municipal facilities, except where you're in a real urban downtown and spaces at an absolute premium.
And you don't have to have it in one straight line. It could be...
Yeah.
Like an L shape, too.
You could, yes. And I just wanted to give you a general idea of how much room we had to work with.
Does the topography present any special challenges?
I think the topography, I would say more so that it presents some opportunities. The topographic challenges are on the north side, which is low, and we wouldn't want to raise that up, because right now, it tends to be where stormwater for the whole northern part of the block could end up, and I think that's a benefit that this project, or anything else here, frankly, really has the opportunity to provide.
Mike, would you have to remove many of the mature trees in the lot?
It's too early to say. I think that it's a trade-off between the providing an interesting layout or floor plan for the building and providing efficient parking. And, you know, I wanted to spend an hour and a half getting this together rather than, you know, three or four weeks. So, potentially, I, my first job in planning was on the North Carolina State Campus. I was trying to protect oak trees, not quite the same kind of oak trees that we have here, but large, mature, you know, 150-year-old oak trees. My job was to put up the snow fences, and then the constructions crews would arrive at 5:00 in the morning and take the snow fences away and run over the roots of the trees, and then they'd put them back, more or less where they were, hoping that nobody noticed. It's, I think our construction crews up here are better than that, but it's a challenge with trees of that size and that age. They're, they cover, you know, their roots essentially go out to the boundaries of their tree, the leaf canopy, and that's a lot of distance. I can tell you that when my house was built by people, you know, 30 years before I moved in, we had five oak trees on the site, and they wedged that house between the oak trees, and they didn't start dying until I moved in. And I've had to take out four of the five big oak trees over the 20 years that I've lived on the property, but my tree people have said, "It was just time. It wasn't your house. It was, it was just, you know, their time to go."
So, Mike, are you comfortable tonight talking about what you see as the positive and negative impacts of a village building on that site?
Well, the main positive impact from where I am and try to figure out how things can fit and how things can sequence is if we're constrained to the current library, senior center, post office end of the block, the main advantage of going off of that block, wherever, would be that we could build a new facility, whether it was the library or the senior center, and we could sequence the moves and the construction of later phases of the project, so that every facility only had to move once. And, you know, a senior center can be confusing if you move it a couple times over the course of three or four years, but there's not all that much in there. I'd much rather move the contents of a senior center, for example, than my house. But a library is the exact opposite situation. There are so many individual items in a library. Yeah, and they ought to be in order, you know, so...
It helps.
So, and then, you know, you've got particularly for the library, the modern needs of a library in terms of contents and wiring and equipment and cabling. So, it, to a lesser extent, that we'd have that in the senior center, but generally, it's an, you know, the ideal situation is for every facility to move once. The current senior center site is the best site for putting a large building on that east end of the block. As we go south and farther, or pardon me, north and farther east towards the ball fields, you know, we're in soils that are only good for open space or parking. So, the senior center site would be the ideal place, particularly if we had to go to two stories for a second building. So, if we didn't go here and we're still constrained to that block, everything would have to be two stories. Sequencing would be a problem, or there'd be no ability to expand. And although we have a lot of on-street parking in that area, I don't know that we'd have enough parking right out of the blocks for a new library and a new senior center on-site. We would have to expect to use the parking that's available on the street, which, you know, frankly, I don't see as a problem, but some people might, because they have to walk farther. If I could just go on for just a minute, this is in a TIF district, so we talked about the value of these properties, and if this was bought for village purposes, that value would come off the tax roll. It would go down to zero, and that would affect the financial viability of the TIF district. We can share finances between the TIF district, but, you know, as a general principle, you don't want to reduce the value of the TIF district by taking buildings down if you aren't gonna replace them with something that has more tax value, and in this case, we wouldn't be able to do that.
Any more questions? Yeah, go ahead, Jerry.
Yes, Mike, excuse me. Would it, are you alluding to the fact that it might be better off to relocate the senior center and expand the library in its current location?
I think if the senior center were to go here, I think what would be the most advantageous would be to tear down the current senior center building and put the library, a new library there.
So, it would fit as Nikki described?
It would have to be two stories, and I'm not sure if we could, we could build a two-story new library where the senior center is without taking part of the existing library. It's a tight fit. We discovered that during our planning workshop with the Legos. It's a tight squeeze there.
So, are you, you're saying then, too, that it might be possible to do that and leave the library in its current location, and would it be possible to phase it and not have to move the library twice?
I think it would be possible to not move the library twice, and we would start on the site of the current senior center. And I think what we would want to do is either initially go two stories, maybe not to the full 30-some thousand square feet, maybe 25 would fit, 24,000, or go to one story with a bigger footprint and build that building, so in the long run, it could be expanded up.
So, soul borrowings would be part of that process on the current site?
They would, and of course, I'm trying to transmit Mark Bielo's knowledge of that site. I'm more sure that the rest of that block is a real challenge, that I am the two stories can necessarily go on the current senior center site.
I have a question, maybe directed at Allison, regarding programming at the library for seniors. Is that, is that a significant amount of activity?
Programming at the library for seniors?
Or is there a linkage, how great is the linkage between the library and senior center in terms of programming?
Oh, we, we collaborate on quite a few projects, but I wouldn't say it's a regular occurrence. If we were, if we happen to be under the same roof, of course, we're going to partner a lot more and use the same rooms and, I don't know, what would you say?
Well, I, I think that, that's kind of where you're going is, is another aspect of then maybe what you were going for, Doug. We definitely see each other as fantastic partners. And we did talk about what if we have to split up? How would that affect the services that we're able to provide? And I, and it's almost in a way that if we weren't right next to each other, it would actually increase, I think, our coordination because we would be forced to pay better attention to, you know, what's going on where...
I have heard a lot of feedback from seniors who want the senior center and the library not necessarily under the same roof, but adjacent to each other. And I think it's because people have become so accustomed to coming to the senior center for programming or assistance with case management and then going to the library afterward. It is convenient.
Thank you. Other questions from trustees? Okay, thanks, Mike, and we'll come back to you. I would, yes, which takes us to item three, which is public input. I guess I would like a quick show of hands. How many people in the public are planning on speaking right now?
No.
Let's see. Okay, so we'll take three to four minutes apiece.
Three, four minutes?
Yeah, on your talk.
Can I draw your chart?
I would love you to take this down.
Leave it up.
So you need to grab a microphone. There's a wireless right there. Identify yourself with address, please. Mike will help you out with that.
I was told my voice was loud. That's because I'm hard to hear.
It is hard to hear in the back there, so the mic is helpful.
Can anybody hear me? Everybody?
As you're nodding, you're all set.
Okay. Here we go.
So again, you need to identify yourself and address, please.
My name is Connie Dollard. I'm a very much a senior citizen. I live at 5441 County Road A, Brooklyn, but all the grandkids and everybody is associated with Oregon schools. I've been associated with Oregon School in a direct way, indirect way since '74, when my kids went to school on the school bus to Oregon. But I've often driven by this sanctuary. And then when I heard that they were going to be putting in assistant living, I had asked, well, what do we, you know, assistant living, exactly what do they do in there? Because a lot of assistant living, people need help. Anyhow, when I heard that it was voted down, I came up with a quick idea that I've been visualizing for quite a while. And I presented this to Ed Scott and Robin Roberts. Robin Roberts is one of the owners of the land. He's asking a million dollars for that land. Are you prepared to pay a million dollars?
We have not talked about that, and that's on the, not on the document for tonight.
Okay. So here, this is what I propose. I'll take his little yellow thing. And the most reasonable place to go there would be the senior library. And the senior library would be great right here. There would be like Christmas trees for a buffer so the people wouldn't see the building. Same here. And there would be just the right amount of parking here for the seniors that come to the senior center. And across the way, going all the way from wherever it's feasible, certainly for sure here, I'm looking at cottage style housing. In other words, they would be like, you know what an H looks like? They would be deep. Your living room in first, your kitchen, two bedrooms. You would have a garage, single garage separating you from the other house. The garage, in the back part of the garage would be your, if we have a, if you don't have a basement, it'd be your heater, your water and that stuff, and it'd be storage. You would each have a porch. They would look something like this. And the way I figured it, but Ed Scott, both Mr. Scott and Robbins is on board with this idea. They would come in with quite a few of those so-called cottage houses. I think seniors would love it. Seniors are, there are different types of seniors. Some that like to travel a lot, some that have something to do, some that wants to downsize their house and make, but yet still have a little bit of a yard. You don't get that in an apartment. You don't get that in a condo. You can have some pots on your patio in the condo. And if you're lucky, some of the apartments may have balconies. So I'm thinking it's a win-win situation for the village and for the senior citizens to put the senior center there. You have a back street that the seniors could drive out of. They don't have to worry about Jefferson Street and getting run over. They're usually out of here, but they're very quiet. These people would be very quiet. I think you're going to get a lot of money's worth out of these so-called cottage houses. But that's up to Ed Scott to crunch the figures and approach Robin and see if it's feasible. All I am is a senior citizen out and about looking for something reasonable, reasonable, not Bergamot, I'm sorry. I don't have that kind of money. There's a lot of seniors that don't have that kind of money. And you'll be surprised that maybe when some of yous retire and you have to look for senior housing, you're going to find it's quite expensive. So you're going to have to, you could, I mean, I didn't do my homework when I was younger. I had no reason to. I was busy working, raising a family. And then when I didn't raise a family anymore, I was still working and that stuff. And ended up selling my house. My daughter and her husband sold their house. We combined our, our money and bought a bigger house for seven grandkids. So anyhow, I have been spending a lot of time looking at other places and analyzing. And this is my vision for that spot.
Good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you sharing your ideas. Who would like to be next?
My name is Sarah Dewey, and I live at 266 North Main. And just a couple of questions. I really didn't do much, any homework for this, for tonight. Just came to hear what everybody had to say. So this woman here passed out a sheet with, from Access Dane, with the tax information and assessment information. And it differs greatly from what Mr. Slavney provided. So what I'm curious about, the total assessed value from the county page is 387,000 versus 687,000?
There's, there's three parcels. There's three parcels.
Oh, so this is just for the one?
Without looking at...
Is that what I'm seeing?
Without looking at, it's probably true.
Okay, okay. So, so I understand that both Robin and...
Marshall.
Marshall, thank you, have quite a bit of money tied up. And because the property has been sitting for so long. So I think it'll be interesting just to see how that's negotiated out. I don't thi, I personally, just based on the whole process that we all went through with the proposed projects, the village and the residents shouldn't have to suffer because they maybe made some poor decisions, business decisions with that property. So hopefully that'll play into negotiating. Couple other quick questions. So with the current library and senior center property, if you were to move both to the, the property we're talking about, what are, what are you thinking of or what are the options being played around with for the current property that's there? When you're taught, when Mr. Slavney was talking about a two-story building going in there, that, that the senior center would potentially accommodate a two-story building, what are you thinking that...
The, the two-story would be the senior center and the library still on, on the current site.
Okay. So if they both move there, what are you thinking you're going to do with that?
Mike's saying, oh, let him speak.
They won't fit.
Right. Okay. I'm just saying, what is the village even thinking about at this point if you move both the senior center?
He just said that they won't fit there.
Oh, both won't fit on, on this side?
We have not talked about moving both buildings there. This is our first discussion. We're just...
Oh, I missed it. I thought your whole thing was talking about...
No, this is very limited.
Okay, pardon me. Okay.
He said either one will fit, but not both.
Okay. So then, was the current library not built with the idea of a two-stage, two-phase plan with that? Had I heard that? The library, the current library. So if the senior center...
None of us were around. We weren't involved at that time.
It was in the paper. That's what it said in the paper.
Oh, I can, I can answer that to some degree. So when I, I, I've only been in this position since January. And when I came in, I went through lots and lots of documents that I found around the library. And they kind of put together just like a, a history for myself of what was going on there. And there are, the original plans for the library did show that there was going to be a two-phased piece. One was the footprint that we currently have. And then it was going to mirror into where the senior center is. We, that's why we've been over capacity since pretty much the get-go. The second phase just never came to be.
So if you, if you followed that kind of original plan and you did mirror it to the senior center property, current property, would that give you the 32,000 square foot on a single level?
No, because we're at 10,500 square feet right now. And where we currently are built, we can't go as far, my understanding from looking at the, the papers that I found at the library is that you can't go, you can't make a basement there without some major accommodations.
So if you mirrored it and just did a second story on the new addition, that would give you your 35,000, right? So you keep the existing single story, add on to that and up.
It would give you 30,000. And that might be a possibility there. It depends on the soil conditions.
Okay. So then, what are the other options at this time that the village is looking at for if you moved either one of the, the senior center or the library to this site? Are there any other sites available to move the, the other two? So if you move the library to this, is there another site available for the senior center somewhere else?
I think the, the best site for the senior center, if the library were to move here, would be to expand towards the current library.
Okay. So I guess what I'm getting at is if you're going to lose revenue by moving either of the projects to this and, and lose the TIF district, is there somewhere else to go with the second piece of the two? And then can that whole property as it is right now be moved into a TIF or become a TIF? And then you make a plan for some sort of development that's going to give you that tax revenue that you're looking for that you might be losing from this? That's what I'm getting at.
The TIF district doesn't go away. The, the increment goes away for this property. The, the large TIF district doesn't go away just because the village moved on.
So what does that mean to you guys? So you're losing tax revenue, correct?
The potential for redevelopment on this site if, if the village building goes to on there.
Okay. So you, you would lose the tax base from that?
Correct. Yep.
So what I'm saying is can you create a new tax base in the existing property by putting something there that you could tax?
Well, we've, we've talked about initial, or very preliminary about possibly doing, like for example, senior housing with apartments or condos above. So that would be, you know, in some respects that'd help pay for the construction of the building, but that's just very preliminary. So...
For where? Where would you put the senior housing?
Over the senior center.
At the existing one?
Mm-hmm.
Then you have to have maintenance and everything. You have to treat that as a different type of...
I'd like to go out just a person at the microphone, please. It does not pick up on TV. So you'll have, you'll have to just wait, please.
Okay. And then finally, I'll, I know I'm running over here. So is the village currently looking at, or the current owners, are they currently looking at any other options at this time for that property? Or is this the only one being tossed around?
So the, the owners are currently not working with the village on this, where this is really the first discussion.
Okay.
The, the owners are allowing the village some time, some, to, to possibly consider acquiring the property. We can't, we can't drag this out forever because they...
Right.
I do believe they have some other interested developers on, on the property. So we can't like take months to go through.
Right.
So we're having this meeting, and I'm sorry, it's you and me just talking.
No, you go.
Having this meeting tonight, having a meeting next Monday. And we'll sort of have to see where we are after these two meetings to see where we're going with it as far as the, the board's interest in it.
Okay. All right.
Can you talk to Roberts?
And I, I, I just wanted to say one last thing, and that is I want to express my gratitude and my sincere pleasure, happiness that the village has included us and communicated to us and are, you're involving us and you're listening to us. And that means more than you know after the long haul we've been through. And it means a lot. I appreciate it. And I want to thank each and every one of you for that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill Simmons. I believe there's one more hand who wanted to talk. Susan? Can you just silence that completely or turn it off?
I don't know. Use nothing. Three.
If you could just turn it off completely, that'll stop. Or take it out in the hallway. Susan?
Hi, I'm Susan Chetavi, and I own a house on Main Street, which is currently a duplex, which I rent both units on Main Street. And I've presented this idea before, and I'm going to present it again. I think, first of all, it's just wonderful that the village is considering purchasing the property where the, the old church is located.
You have to leave the door open. It's, it's an open meeting.
Thank you.
I think it's just wonderful that the village is considering purchasing this property. I think it's a beautiful property, very prime, and very suitable for whatever use the village decides. And I think that the decision the village has to make first is whether they're going to purchase it or not. And I'm hoping that if that decision is made, that there would be time for community input, some type of a committee where more, more studying would be done to decide what the best configuration would be. And I have shared with the village before that I think the example of what Wanakee has done is just a really great idea. They've produced, they've constructed a multi-generational facility, and the square footage is 45,000 square feet. And it includes a senior center, a community center, and a youth center. And I've noticed that the youth center has not been mentioned in these discussions. And I, I feel that the youth center is getting short shrift. I think we really need something better for our youth than what we have now. And as I mentioned, Wanakee has come up with a solution where they have a community building, which includes a senior center, it includes a youth center, and there are facilities that are shared. For instance, a gymnasium, an exercise room, a commercial kitchen, a computer room. These are shared by the different entities. So you're saving something by doing that. I think it's just an excellent idea. And again, I'm, oh, concerning the library, I know that I did read in the paper that there had been a stage one and a stage two planned, but the stage one was completed. And it seems to me it would make financial sense to add on to the current library and do that stage two. I, I have some handouts, which I'm going to just leave here for anybody in the audience that would like them. This is a, these are printouts that came from this publication in Wanakee. And I made printouts because, as I say, I think it's a great facility. I encourage anyone to visit it because I think it, it shows what some imagination can do. And I'm hoping the village will exercise maximum imagination in the use of this property. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan.
May I ask?
Go ahead, Nikki.
A question?
Yes.
Oh, no, now I forgot it. Now that I'm on the spot.
About expanding the library?
Oh, yes, thank you. The, the expansion of the library. Sorry about that. So one of the concerns... Um, so, uh, one of the concerns, I, just to share information, is that the, our current structure, um, would cost a heck of a lot. It needs so much updating, there's many, many problems with it. Um, so that would be a factor for whatever direction the village goes with everything, you know, if they were thinking about using it for a different purpose at some point, whatever the case, I think it's important that we bear in mind that that building would be in great need and need a, a expensive amount of work.
Okay.
Thanks.
Was there anyone else at this time that wanted to address the board? And you notice on the agenda, this, this does come back to us, uh, next week for additional discussion.
Am I allowed to make another comment?
If it's real quick, but you have to come to the microphone.
Pardon me?
You have to come to the microphone. This gotta be quick.
Okay, um, my concern was, and it was mentioned to me, that the library is very much used by the children from the school, and they walk over. You're not gonna have them walk across Main Street. Main Street is a racetrack. Even though it says twenty-five, most people don't listen to it. But to keep the library where it is would be great. You extend it over an L shape. Where it is now, you go over, and then you, when you tear down the senior center, you put the library there too. The senior center would be over here, would be a great place for it. Also, you're making money off of the cottage-style houses that are gonna be put in there. You need to do something more for seniors. You're, they cannot go to Bergamot and pay fifteen hundred a month or seventeen hundred a month.
Don't repeat yourself, please.
What?
Don't repeat yourself, please. You told us this before.
Well, okay, okay, sorry. But I just thought it would be a great idea. You can kill two birds with one stone. The senior center, and there's gonna be parking for the seniors. There is a strip there, um, if you see it, you see the end street over there, and then when you come in, you see that little going in, that'd be perfect for parking. And then, like I said, um, you can camouflage by Christmas trees, and you can do a lot with, with landscaping.
Thank you.
Sorry, but especially with the kids. You gotta keep the kids in mind about running all over. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, John, you'd like to speak?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, good afternoon, John Temptie. I live at two ninety-four North Main Street, and I just want to take the opportunity to thank the entire village board and the planning commission for listening to our community and responding. I don't know what's the best thing for this property, uh, but, uh, once I occurred options for public space, public buildings and so on, the idea that this really enhances the neighborhood, creates a situation where we have, uh, activity, but, uh, activity that I think enhances, uh, the community, uh, for both myself, my family, my neighbors, uh, everyone I've talked to has been very, very favorable. That's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Okay, are we set to move on? Okay, looks like we are. So, item four here, so everybody knows, says, uh, continuing discussion with village planner Mike Sladney at this, uh, board meeting on September nineteenth. Mike?
Nice, thanks, Mr. Sladney. I wanted to do the, please keep stuff.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's all on item three B.
Thank you, Mike.
You sure? Oh, what time do you have to leave, Chief? Okay, oh, okay, okay. I'm not sure we can get this done and get, get all your stuff done in that long time.
Can't get all your stuff done.
Can't get your stuff done. Okay, so, uh, just a couple comments. Uh, you may have noticed Mr. Bollig had to leave. He's also on the county board. He chairs the zoning commission. He has to chair a meeting tonight, so he had to leave. We don't normally have village board meetings on this night, it's finance meetings, so, um, he had to go because he chairs that, and Chief Yule, uh, needs to leave to go to the school board meeting, uh, when he leaves here, so he gets a double dose tonight. So we're gonna do some, uh, police department items at the present time, and we'll start this. Item eight, communication and miscellaneous business. I think the first one is item D, discuss some possible action regarding school resource officer agreement between the Village of Oregon and Local four twenty-one of the Wisconsin Police Association, so. Are you all with me over here?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, is there a proposed, is there a proposed motion? Um, Chief, is it, is it simply that you'd like us to approve the agreement that you presented?
That would be fantastic, yeah.
So I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So we have the motion second to approve the school resource officer agreement with the school. Any discussion or questions? Anyone? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item E, uh, discuss some possible action regarding trading in of AR-15 rifle for DPMS AR-15 rifle and using two thousand sixteen budget funds for required parts.
I'll make the motion to allow Chief to make that trade.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Please, please.
Item F, uh, as an FYI, August K-9, uh, police dog statistics. Uh, those are in a packet for people that are watching online can see those. Thanks, Mr. Sladney. Any questions from trustees on those?
Nope.
Can't keep up with myself here.
Gee. You're doing good.
Thanks, Jeff. Uh, G, police department enforcement of Alpine Parkway and Highway CC pedestrian crosswalk.
Thanks for the warning.
Absolutely. Uh, just real briefly, we've been getting a lot of complaints about, uh, vehicles not yielding pedestrians at that intersection. Um, I have noticed myself that, uh, the people that are, the pedestrians that come across it haven't quite figured out to push the button yet to use the flashing beacon, so that'll help as well, but cars are supposed to stop, they're not stopping, so we're gonna continue that operation to, to try and get the word out. So thank you for putting it on the agenda tonight, so we can have that out on, on TV to get the word out.
And thanks, Chief, for having your officers do this. Uh, I've said many times, my daughter lives in Maine, they have the, basically the same law we do, but people stop for pedestrians, it's amazingly different, Florida's the same way, I guess, so it'd be nice to see that happen in, uh, in Oregon and in Wisconsin, I think. It's, it's a much safer environment, and it's just a more calm traffic situation, pedestrian situation in a municipality. Uh, next is item K, uh, discuss some possible action, approval of police department policies.
I'll make the motion to approve the policies that were presented to the board.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
And thanks again for continuing to move us down that path in any professional police organization, Chief.
Absolutely, this is just, uh, another step in that process, also keeping up with current laws, so.
Now, those are online for anyone who would like to see those. Uh, Chief is redoing many, many policies. Uh, we appreciate his thoroughness and, uh, uh, his efficiency in doing these. Uh, it's a big step for us, and it's great to have these all updated. We had a motion, right?
That was me.
Yeah. Okay. Doug, second. I didn't write it down, guys are going so fast, can't keep up. Uh, okay, so any questions on those? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item M, discussion possible action approving salary of sixty-six thousand five hundred dollars for Police Sergeant Luke Cass.
I'll make the motion.
Second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? This brings him on par with others.
This is the same, uh, it's same salary as our last promotion.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Takes us over to personnel and public safety and protection from August twenty-second, two thousand sixteen. Uh, usually trustee Carpenter would, uh, do this because she chairs that committee, but she is not here, able to be here tonight. And item two is discussion possible action regarding ordinances, ordinance for regulation of alarm systems. Uh, the recommended motion, which comes from personnel as a motion, is to direct the village attorney to prepare necessary language to adopt the ordinance presented to Chief Mulnerek and to work to distribute information to the chamber of conference. So that's the motions, our second.
Second that.
Thank you. Comments, Chief?
Uh, this had to do with the alarm systems that, uh, Chief Mulnerek and I had been working on for the number of false alarms I ever received, so we're working on doing a policy that would help, uh, recoup some of those funds, so.
Have we communicated with the school on this?
Um, we have not, but we certainly will.
Yeah.
What, what Brian and I are talking about is, I think when the, uh, when the ordinance comes back, we may, uh, suggest to remove the school district from the fee, because Brian's working with them.
Yeah.
And try to, we're gonna try to encourage them to, well, Brian has been encouraging that to, and so we probably, when you see the ordinance come back, we'll probably pull the school district out.
Yeah, and they have a lot of doors and a lot of people, so.
They do, absolutely.
I remember being a president, getting a lot of calls.
Yeah, Chief's working on that.
Yeah, okay, okay, very good. So any questions or discussion over here? So we have that, uh, motion to prepare language, uh, for an ordinance, uh, to work to distribute information to the chamber. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item three, uh, discussion possible action regarding Chief Yule's request for permission to use his police squad for limited personal use. The village administrator's recommended motion is to, the board wants to approve the request, uh, Mike is recommending voting on the concept and directing him to discuss the preparation of guidelines with Labor Attorney Kyle Goulia for the board and Chief Yule's consideration at the September nineteenth board meeting.
So I'll give that direction to Mike, because I would definitely be in favor of approving the motion.
Okay.
Second.
Good, thank you. I would too, I think this, this, this makes sense, so.
Could, could be just one comment.
You bet.
First, thanks for the motion. Uh, this, I would also ask them that when this comes back that, that we do, this is also impacts Jeff's use of the, of his truck.
Okay.
So we'd come back with, it'd probably be the same guidelines, and I'd ask the board to consider both of them at the meeting next, next Monday night.
Okay.
My goal is to try to get it done by next Monday night.
Okay, good. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I think that's the last one.
That's it. And then, just, uh, number seven, on the bottom there.
Oh, yeah, I wrote this, I couldn't read it.
That's fair.
Uh, item seven, discussion possible action, police chief's two thousand fifteen evaluation. Uh, motion is to authorize village administrator to conduct a two thousand fifteen evaluation of the police chief, so I'm bringing that as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, everybody got a second on that?
Yep. We have to call it?
Yeah. Any discussion?
All tied for second.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Good, now we got it, right?
We're done.
Okay.
We'll be doing that.
With time to spare, thank you.
Yeah.
I can hang out for a little while.
Perfect. So I'm gonna jump up and do number six right above that. I don't pee with you, Alisa. I thought you liked that.
Oh.
So, it'll be quick, I think. So discussion possible action, excuse me, part-time position, uh, and participating in the high school project search program. Uh, the motion I'm bringing is to recommend the village board hire Ethan Mullenbrunk as part of this project search employment program, at approximately ten to fifteen hours per week. Uh, funding for the part-time position will be through reimbursement, funding for the state through June two thousand seventeen, and covered by the village board thereafter. Anticipate a hire date would be October first, two thousand sixteen.
Second.
Thank you. Do you want to make any comments, Alisa? Kind of give you a chance to sell your program a bit here.
So, my name is Alisa Reed, and I work with the eighteen to twenty-one program at Oregon High School, and I think about a year ago we approached Steve to talk about it, and he sent us to Jeff. And this is through the high school program, but we're hoping that it will be a long-term commitment, that Ethan will become a long-term employment of the county, and a valued, or of the village, sorry, and a valued member, or valued employee. Um, we are looking about ten hours a week. DVR will pay for the employment from hire date to graduation date, so June tenth or whatever that works out to be next June, and then it would become a responsibility of the village. He does come with a job coach until all partners believe that that job coach maybe isn't necessary anymore. It may be for the, he may have one forever, I don't know. But that would switch from our school district employee to a county employee come June. Um, I don't know, does anyone have any questions? How about?
I have some comments, just because, you know, that we've evaluated this program as what, as well as, I met personally with Lisa and, um, and Ethan, um, for, I don't know, half hour one day or so, um, really nice chance just to get together and ask Ethan some questions, as, as well as, um, talk about the program, talk about his abilities and his desires. I found him to be a very nice young man. Um, uh, from what I understand, he's, he's very conscientious, he's also very task-oriented, so we would make sure that, um, we kind of have a list and tasks generated, um, that would be a daily kind of routine, which we think will fit Ethan very, very well with this. Um, from a budget standpoint, it doesn't impact us until, um, September, or sorry, until June of the following year, and even then the budget impact is, is fairly minimal. I, um, I mean, I hate to say it, but that's, maybe you want to explain that that's kind of how, they're, they're only allowed to earn up to a certain amount or something like that.
So Ethan receives disability services from the county, and once he hurt, hits a certain amount of hours of work, they start to take some of that funding. And so he already works two hours a day for the mule, they do the insurance, the laundry for the hospitals, custodial services there. So we were hoping for two hours in the afternoon, kind of to fill his day, give him some more pocket money, but not detract from the money and services he already needs. That being said, he would never need any of the full-time or part-time benefits that the village would offer. He has healthcare through the county, through the state. He doesn't need retire, he can't have retirement because that, that money would affect his wages as well. So it really is just his hourly wage, ten hours a week, that would be the commitment from the village.
Any, any questions from trustees? I would mention I did, uh, meet with Ethan probably about a year ago now. Like I, I said, government doesn't move real fast a lot of times, but we got there, so, and I was impressed with him, he's a nice young man. He has some skills and abilities that will, are developed already, and I think will increase through working here, and I think he'll fit in really well. So I think it gives us a chance to help a young man, uh, find another little niche he might not otherwise, and also, uh, for him to do some tasks that will help us out. This is not just a gift to him to come here. Uh, he'll be doing stuff that's important for us and for your other employees and you other things, so, uh, looking forward to it.
He's also a resident of Oregon.
Yeah.
Lives, lives in a group home here, I believe, and, uh, it's kind of nice to have that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's his long-term goal to stay in that home in Oregon, so.
And, and congratulations to him for doing things right, so he's gotten this point. It's very commendable on his part, so please let him know that we think that. Okay. Any questions or anything else over here? So we have the motion second to approve that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be in touch with you. Thanks, Alisa.
Okay.
Great. Yes. Thanks for doing that, Steve.
So we'll now get back to item three, public appearances, and, um, three C is a public[1599.63] So we'll now get back to item three, public appearances, and three C, is a public hearing for Mahendran Namaseveam, I hope I came fairly close on that. Agent for Mahan Shavanti LLC has filed an application for class A for men of malt beverage and class A intoxicating liquor license with the village clerk for the village of Oregon for the property at nine oh five North Main Street, would be called Mahan's Liquor, Oregon, Wisconsin. This notice is given pursuant to section one twenty-five point oh four three G WS and village ordinance number sixteen days seventeen, so I'm gonna open that public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this, other than the petitioners? Come on up, sir.
Well, I'm a bit of a petition.
That's all right. Nobody, no other hands came up, they have a chance anyhow, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And welcome.
Thanks so much.
Yeah.
Hello guys.
Hello.
Nice seeing you guys.
First of all, I spent eight years as a village trustee in Sherwood Hills, so, and I, I was pleased with my time, but I'm glad I'm done. Being back here just helps reinforce that, but.
Yeah, we're not done with you, yeah.
Coincidentally, Matt Dregney was their village attorney, so it was nice to see Matt.
Yeah.
And then, and another disclosure, Mahendran has been a second dad to me. I knew Shavanti when she was four, I ran his liquor store when I was in college, I run a commercial, excuse me, my name's Tim Rickers, thirty-five, ten Sunset, Madison, Wisconsin, and I, I now have a commercial real estate firm, I've handled six or seven of Mahan's leases. I, I also should say, his wife Anu is one of my favorite people in the entire world, and I'm usually not allowed to go to their house, because I eat all the time, and they don't let me in. But, so with those two disclosures, I also want to illuminate kind of a curious issue here, which is the following. As a real estate broker, we've pursued this lease at nine oh five North Main, and we didn't get it. To the best of my knowledge, they've accepted another lease contingent upon acceptance or approval of, of the liquor license. So I've been in contact with the landlord's attorney at Reinhardt, and they've encouraged us to come again today to express our interest and present any credentials or anything else you need to know about this. We're ready, willing, and able to sign a lease for the property. We believe that Mahan is qualified to do so, not just economically, but certainly is his, is his record operating liquor stores across the country, or said rather, across the county. So, that's about all we have to say. We're here really just to express our interest in being considered for a license in the event that we can secure a lease, and I, I can't guarantee we can secure a lease, but for the fact that the landlord's counsel has suggested we come tonight. So, that's, that's all we've got for you. If you've got any questions, we'll answer them.
I do want to add one more thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is a family business, and we are very straightforward, and we, we've learned in the past that partners and liquor businesses just don't really mix, so we don't plan to go into business with anyone else. This would just be run by my father with his little elves, me and our manager, basically.
So the former owner has no connection with you?
No, even when we went to go, when we showed interest to the liquor store, we always approached the liquor store owner first before going to the landlord, because we don't want anyone feeling like we're going behind their back or anything like that. So that's why when we were discussing everything, we didn't know the background of everything yet, and then as things were coming up, that's when we started going directly to the landlord.
I, I think to be more clear, we would warrant an lease and any type of application that, that this would be solely owned by Mahendran, and, and there would be no connection with any further, any, any prior employees. I understand that there was some tension prior to that.
There were significant problems.
So, we don't intend in taking any of those on, this is, this, Mahan is a sole proprietor, doesn't have any partners in any of the leases, so. I also say one of, as relates to leases also, I was just trying to total up the number of deals we've done, I think there's seven or eight of them. Every landlord that we've ever done business with would provide a letter of reference, so.
Okay. Any questions for the, here?
I just have a couple of questions for clarification.
Yeah.
So, as I read through the, the application, I noticed question five, is the individual partners or agent of corporation liability company subject to completion of the responsible beverage server training course for this license period? Candy, can you explain to me what that question means?
I'm just trying to find it.
That's okay.
Does the application, I believe, was taken, was it from the city of Madison?
Yeah, we, we took it from a number of places.
This is the supplemental.
I think I have it on page thirteen.
I'm going to, I'm looking for it. Is this the auxiliary questionnaire?
The original alcohol beverage retail license application.
This one here.
Yeah, we got it.
It's actually on there.
Did you say number five?
Yes.
Well, this is a Department of Revenue form, and it's a little unclear what they're asking. I interpret it to be asking whether the, if it's a corporate applicant, whether the agent of the corporation, and here we have a corporate applicant, I believe, or an LLC.
So the, the, Mahan is the, is the, is the only member.
Who's the designated agent, though, for the, do you remember? That's here, hold on, I'll find it.
He is.
Yep.
Okay. So it asks, I think whether that agent is subj, it says, subject to completion of the course, and the answer is no, so I interpret that to mean, and we get clarification, that he has in fact already completed the course.
He has, I have already emailed Candy, I believe, two weeks ago.
It's in the packet.
Is it, okay, a completion of his course.
Does that answer your question?
So, yeah, so the way the question's worded, if the applicant answers no, it means he's already completed the course, if the, if the answer is yes, it means he's yet to complete the course.
That's how I read it.
Okay. And then my second question for you or for Candy is, question eight C, does the corporation, any officer, director, stockholder, or agent, or limited liability company, or any member, manager, or agent, hold any interest in any other alcohol beverage license or permit in Wisconsin?
And it says no, but I think the answer is yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so we've got leases in Lodi, Madison, and Salk. And that comes later. Those, those answers are illuminated in the auxiliary questionnaire four.
Right.
But then it sounds like eight C, the answer should be changed to yes from no.
Sounds, that sounds correct.
Good catch, yeah.
And those are my only questions. Can you all make that change for us?
Well.
It's already been submitted and signed, so I think if you all could simply provide to the clerk a letter or email, check request, clarifying that, and I think internally the information is there, apparently it was a mistake, nearly completing that page. So an email to the clerk confirming that, I think we, or even now verbally, I don't know, you want to just change it?
Wait, was she, let's get an email.
Let's get, we can do an email.
I, I think probably it was a, it was a uncertainty over what the term agent might have meant, that would be my guess.
I don't know. I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Matt.
All right. So your application notes that you have, do not yet have your seller's permit for this location, but you're work, you're, you're in the process of applying for that, and apparently that was something you didn't have, oh, here, here, the letter says, we also have not applied for, for an LLC and the seller's permit yet, due to the pending of the lease.
We have a chicken and egg situation, right? I mean, we're hesitant to spend dollars and effort to, to get permits that we, when we don't control the property, and quite frankly, one of the options was simply not to come tonight, but to wait to whether, to see whether or not the next, the applicant was, the, the existing applicant was approved, and the lease then ratified. Or we could wait, and so we, we thought based upon input both from, as I understand it, the village and from the landlord's counsel, that we were gonna come tonight to answer questions and reaffirm our interest.
Okay, so you're.
We have done the LLC, we just haven't done the seller's permit.
Okay, so the LLC has been formed.
Correct.
The seller's permit, you would apply for that, pay for that.
Exactly.
If the board approves.
Approves, correct.
And I, I think the seller's, and I think in another instance, what we did was, we conditioned the approval on obtaining the seller's permit. So, the, I've seen a copy of the lease that the current landlord has with the other applicant, and I didn't notice anything in that lease about.
Contingency?
No.
So, I, I don't know.
You didn't see that?
I didn't, I didn't write the lease.
Okay.
You, you would assume that they would have had a contingency, or they got a problem.
Yeah. And, and the landlord is represented by Reinhardt?
Yes.
Do you know who at Reinhardt?
Josh Taggats, and Justin Oath.
Josh, how's, how's spelled his last name?
T A G G A T Z, and then Justin, do you know Justin? O E, O E T H. I can, I can send you the information.
Okay, I think I have it, but if I.
Yeah.
If I need it, I'll let you know.
No problem.
Okay.
So, you know, again, it's a, it's a curious situation, because it's, quite frankly, it's, as you said, it's not just, if you give us a seller's permit or the license, we get the permit, we don't have a lease. We, I've seen the prior lease of the property, it's not horrible, I presumably that this, the new lease would be similar to it, it's a pretty basic document, so, I, as I contemplate how this might work mechanically, it might be an approval of the document or approval of the license, and then at some point, if this makes sense, and we say we have a lease, it becomes a consent agenda. I don't know, but that seems like it might make sense that way.
Well, I expect the board will be talking about its options after it has gathered whatever information it needs. I, I think the chief is not, have you presented your report on this particular application yet? Did you get it at the last meeting?
No, we, well, I don't know if I presented the background or not, but I can certainly summarize the background, because there really wasn't much to it.
Yeah. I mean, the board needs to hear that at some point in the process.
Yeah, go ahead, chief.
Yeah, so just, just in summary, I'm gonna have to go off memory now, but there was only one violation, I believe, that I remember, and that was in Lodi, that was with a new employee, I believe, that was selling, and that, that was rectified right away, and other than that, everyone had glowing things to say about Mahendran and this organization that they've had, so I didn't find anything in the background whatsoever, other than that, that one violation.
Okay, good.
I, I point out, I actually hired two of my brothers at one time, too, so that was, that's a black mark.
And that violation, if I might add, was probably two or three years ago, you know, when that occurred, so.
Okay.
And there were several places that they have their businesses where they do run compliance checks, and they've been cooperative, and they've worked with law enforcement as well, so.
Okay.
I did bring a book of like all of our, well, this is one of our many books of all of our fake IDs that kind of help like train our employees, because not only when, when they do fail the compliance checks with you guys, they also have to sit down with us and talk to us, and go through the whole scenario, what went wrong, how they can prevent it, and then they have to go through the spine area again and refresh their memory of like what to look for, for those fakes, because the downtown kids are getting really crafty nowadays, so.
They can buy good ones, can't they?
I'm telling you, like, yeah, so, we try to work with everyone to make sure everything goes smooth.
Okay, good for you. Other questions over here?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that we tabled the other applicant's request.
Yeah, perhaps I should talk a little bit about where I think you are with respect to this application, the other application, what I think your options are. So, this is a somewhat unusual situation, and you have two parties applying for a license for the same location. Obviously, you can't prove both. The other application, the board did a table consideration of that until your meeting on the nineteenth, next Monday, so we're expecting that that applicant will come back to that meeting and pursue that application further. I think the board on this particular application could take one of two approaches. One, one option would be to act on this application with conditions, so for example, the conditions would be that the license would not be issued unless and until this applicant secures a leasehold interest in the property, and I think I would add to that, and we have confirmation that the other lease either, well, has been terminated in some way. That would be one condition, the other condition would be that the seller's permit be obtained. So, that's one way to approach this, you could, you could act on it conditionally tonight. The other option would be to table this application to a later date, so that you can finish your work on, on the other pending application before you act on this application. I honestly don't know if, you know, one approach is better than the other approach, I, I think they're both viable from a legal and procedural standpoint.
Any questions on that for Matt?
So does the fact that in the addendum, Mahan specifies the address on North Main Street as the address that he'll be operating out of, limit the use of this license to that address only?
Yes, there's a premises description on the application, the, the page we were talking about earlier.
Yeah.
Specifies that the licensed premises, first of all, it specifies the address in item or line.
Should be two, but it's actually three.
Well, actually, it's, the address of the premises is on item four, nine oh five North Main Street, and then the premises description is item nine.
What, what document are you looking at? What page are you on?
I, I'm on.
It's the original application, it's the, the application from the state.
So I'm looking at page fifteen in the packet?
Yeah, I'm not in the packet, I'm just looking at the application, can we find that, Mike?
Sure.
And if this is a legally binding document, I think this should be corrected as well.
I want to see what page you're looking at. Okay, so, oh, okay, yeah, keep going. Okay, so what page is that? Okay, so, on, okay, so the, the application is on page, the, the, the key document is on page twelve, that, that's where the premises description is contained? What page are you looking at?
Page fifteen, the village of Oregon, Oregon supplemental class A license application.
Yeah. Fifteen, item what? What's the?
Item two. And then item three?
Yeah, I noticed that it looks like the.
And item four.
When they fed this document through a printer or something like that, the stuff wasn't showing up in the right blanks. I don't know if you know what I'm talking about, but, for example, it gives under address of licensed premises, in the blank there, it includes the name instead of the address, and then, or the following line, it asks for the telephone number, that gives the address, not.
I know she was saying that when I emailed her everything, she said she was having a hard time like opening it, because the first program I used didn't work for her, so then I had to re-mail it again using a different program.
Yeah, so, Jeff, when I, when I looked at this, I recognized that some of the information is popping up in the wrong spots here, but it looked like it just in a printing error or something, and I could still see what, what they were intending to say.
So if we went to court, because we had to, and we gave this to a judge and said, we intended the liquor license to only be used at this address, because, because this document stipulates, and the judge reads the address as the name of the party, would, would that discount our claim, because the, the legal document's not properly done?
There is, there is no way any judge is gonna interpret this application to describe the license premises as anything other than nine oh five Main Street.
Okay.
In my opinion.
Okay.
It'd be impossible. I'm not worried about it.
I have an idea, which may or not be helpful, we, we would, if for, if for, if you were so inclined to, to grant us this, the, the license with conditions, we're happy to have a two-week sunset plot on it, right? If we can't provide proof of release within some period of time.
Well, that would be, I would recommend that if it was that sort of conditional approval, that we would include a deadline by which you'd have to do it.
And, and maybe, maybe it's two weeks following, I mean, it'd be nice to be able to, I mean, I'm not concerned about the ability to negotiate a lease, but the mechanics to get the other lease terminated, it'd be nice to have two weeks or three weeks or, you know, something along those lines, but twenty-one days perhaps?
Yeah, you tell us how much time you think would be a reasonable time, and.
I haven't read the other lease is the problem, so I, I'm curious as to how they'll terminate, but I'm mostly curious how they're gonna operate without a license.
Well, they, they still have an opportunity to obtain a license.
That kind of brings us back to the point that Doug made, which is, we haven't decided on the application of that license yet.
You have not.
That was tabled.
That was tabled.
So as far as the landlord goes, they've got a, a less E, potential less E, that's waiting for a decision.
That's correct.
Yeah.
On his license.
That's correct.
So to throw one more thing in the mix tonight, as you can see, we're down three members tonight, and these are always important decisions for us.
Sure, sure.
To me, it makes sense to wait until next week, we have seven people here, it's a week, you may have time to look at the lease some more, go from there, and decide.
Our, our, our whole message tonight was simply to make you aware of the situation, make you aware of our continued interests, and, and to say that we're, in the event there's an opportunity here to, A, do the lease, we'll do it, and, and then B, if we're, if we're, you know, so fortunately as you get a license, we're very interested in it, so that was, that's the take-home message from us.
Okay. Any more questions right now?
No, but thank you.
You bet.
Yeah, I want, I wanted to say that, you know, we run a pretty tight ship here in Oregon as far as liquor licenses and how we deal with this, and we have for several years, and, and I think we're proud of that, and I think it needs to happen other places, and you present well, which is good, but you also have a really good track record, which is good, too. I'm not saying that's gonna mean the license gets approved, but you're doing the things you need to do, and you're patient, and we appreciate all of that, so.
Mahan and I knew her at my wedding, you know, for sixteen years ago.
It's just, it's just a big family, is how we look at it, you know? That's, that's how we like to run it, and that's why we like this community, too, because you guys are very in your community, so.
Good.
So, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Steve, we should have a motion to table that.
Yeah, okay. I'm gonna close the public hearing first.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm gonna, anybody else wish to speak on this? Okay, I will close the public hearing, so then we need a motion and a second to postpone this till next week.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay.
So, one thing I'd like to ask, Mike, is it possible to bring the original license So one thing I'd like to ask, Mike, is it possible to bring the original license back to us on the agenda next week before we deliberate Mahen's application request so that we can finish the first before starting the second?
You mean the?
Yeah.
The application from Monumental Enterprises?
Right.
You want that one first?
Yeah, there was, well, there was a note that the applicant was seeking counsel or something like that. I don't know what that means.
Well, you know, here's what I, here's what I can tell you. I, I don't mean, so were you at the last meeting when he was present?
I believe I was.
Okay, but.
August twenty-second.
And his counsel requested additional time, so the matter was tabled to the September nineteen meeting so he could have additional time to conduct his investigation and prepare for the meeting. To my knowledge, he has not submitted any amendment to the application as of yet.
Correct.
So we still have the same application pending. I thought there might be some possibility of an amendment, that that could still happen. If that happens, we'll have to decide whether or not we have to re-notice it, or whether we can just have the meeting and proceed. I'm not, we'll see how that unfolds. But it's certainly that.
I was going to do it that way, Jeff. If nothing changes, I'm going to put him on first.
Thanks.
Yep.
It'll make it easier, it'll make it easier.
Yeah, that's how that should go, okay.
Well, didn't they postpone it because his attorney wasn't here?
Yeah, he had just hired the attorney the day that he was here, and he needed to look at the details, so they agreed to go until the nineteenth, so that's where we're going to be next Monday, so. Okay, we'll go to item three D, still under public appearances, public hearing. Sean Peterson, agent for Oregon Ice Arena, has filed an application for a Class B permanent malt beverage and Class C wine license with the Village Clerk for the Village of Oregon for the property at one hundred North Ferry Parkway, known as Oregon Ice Arena, Oregon, Wisconsin. This notice is given pursuant to section one twenty-five point oh four three G WS and Village ordinance sixteen days seventeen. I will open a public hearing and see if there's anybody here to represent this. What's that?
Oh, we don't have a quorum.
Yeah, we'll wait, we'll wait. Thanks, Phil. We're going to have a short delay till Jeff gets back. We have to have four people here, so. You can go ahead and be seated and.
Are we on a TV timeout then?
No, you're on TV, the only one right now.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we are ready. So if you identify yourself, please name an address and then go ahead.
Sure, my name is Sean Peterson, three ten Beldor Street here in Oregon. I am coming to the board as the agent for the application of a liquor license, beer and wine application for the Oregon Ice Arena. Previously, I have come before this board as, as the actual applicant and agent for the liquor license. After review of the lease and discussion with, with Matt, I'm sorry, I can't ever remember your last name, but.
Matt's fine.
Matt, we had reevaluated the, the terms of the lease, and considering the potential contentious nature of a liquor license approval at the Oregon Ice Arena, felt that it was best, my excellent track record in serving alcoholic beverages would be best focused in the arena of the actual beverage service only, and that is why I'm becoming for the board as the agent instead of as a restaurant operator.
Are there questions for Mr. Peterson?
So you're going to deal with food and the alcohol?
No, sir, I am going to be in charge solely of the sales and the operation of the sales of the alcohol. Our application is for, for beer and, and wine at this time.
And the beer and wine will be only for the, the special skaters, the.
The Whalers.
The Whalers?
What we are, I have gone before the school board, and I am asking the village to consider the school board's concerns while Oasis is occupying as a, as a tenant. The, the school board is not in favor of alcoholic beverages during the school year while Oasis is having their school operations. We are currently only seeking, I guess, an approval for the license with the consideration that we will self-restrict or forcefully be restricted to just beer sales for the Wisconsin Whalers hockey games, home hockey games, until the Oasis program leaves our building. I believe it is scheduled for February two thousand seventeen, and which at that time we would pursue to have those restrictions lifted so that we could have the full liquor license operations on the facility. And, and only the indoor facility, as we discovered previously, the exterior of the building we are not asking for.
So who, who are the actual applicants that are, that are applying for the liquor license?
The application would be for the Oregon Ice Arena Board, and I think it's important to mention that me serving as the agent, I am a separate entity. I would be the one person operating that, that, you know, portion of the business, I guess you would say.
So I think if my memory serves, the, the issue that we were deliberating at the time we met was the fact that August of last year, you had a citation for open intoxicants in your, right, in your vehicle, is that right?
That was, yes, it was, that happened, and I volunteered that information, but the, the lease was the holdup for the, I guess, the application itself.
But just for clarification, I think that there was a discussion about the lease, from my perspective, and that was part of it. What, you know, what does the school board want to do as a tenant, you know, how, how do they feel about this? We've been talking about that for a year. Then the other part, and we, we go through this with every applicant, is the, the judgment of the applicant, right? And to me, we hadn't really quite addressed that before you withdrew the application. So if you're going to, if you're going to present now as an agent, which, I'm trying to follow the bouncing ball here, but what I'm hearing you say is that you're not applying for the liquor license, but you're going to be the one that actually runs the beer sales at the Ice Arena?
Could I weigh in on this?
Yeah, go ahead, yes.
Just to set, set the table procedurally, so the applicant is Oregon Ice Arena Incorporated. That's the applicant, and that would be the holder of the license. One of the things that a corporate applicant is required to do is designate an agent. The village board has the authority to decide whether that agent is acceptable or not acceptable based on their reputation, their record, their character. So I would suggest that procedurally, if, if you want to break it into the right bite-sized pieces, one issue is, is the agent an acceptable agent to the village board? The other question is, let's assume the answer to that is yes, just hypothetically. Then you still have to go to the next question, which is, should the license be approved? And I would treat them as separate questions because there are different standards that apply to each decision.
So I heard you say that you are an agent, and that the board individually were agents as well, is that correct?
I would be the only agent.
You are the only agent, so at this point, it's the Oregon Ice Arena that's applying for a corporate liquor license, and you are the only agent, as opposed to you applying for a liquor license for your entity operating inside of the Ice Arena?
That's correct.
Okay.
What was the school's response to your proposal to be, to serve as agent?
There was, the discussion with the school board wasn't about me personally serving as the agent, rather more so the idea of the liquor license being approved for the facility. The school board is not in favor of a liquor license or any alcoholic beverages being served during the school hours. They felt, and I don't mean to speak for the school board, but it appeared though the school board did not find it was their place to really monitor what went on without the school being there, that their lane was designated only to school operations. They maintain the same position that they previously held. I had offered, in, in addition, we would volunteer, should this application be approved, to remove any alcoholic beverages from the facility where it's being served. We would remove signage, we would work with vendors, distributors to have deliveries outside of school times. These are all concerns that the village, or that, I'm sorry, the school board had for how that operation would work. That's, that's about the best that I can tell you about the school board's position, but they did have a vote. I believe it was five to two for them to maintain their previous position that they have provided to, to this village board.
Okay, thank you.
And you'd like to serve alcohol at all hockey events at the arenas at the plan?
At, at some point potentially, or, or yes, I, I guess I would say. But we are not at a state of law there or nothing. We want to be reasonable. We want to do things the right way. We do understand that serving alcohol is a contentious issue here in Oregon, and we want to do it the right way. We really do. I've spoken with, with Chief Yule, who unfortunately did have to leave already, but I spoke with him about the plan. I have expressed my plan in advance to Mr. Stanton. The, the idea of serving alcohol at the Oregon Ice Arena is to be a supplemental revenue stream to help sustain the Ice Arena, to help support the Wisconsin Whalers and maintain their validity and their sustainability here in Oregon. It generates revenue for the community as they spend money in our restaurants, at the Ice Arena, as we develop, you know, the hotel or more hotels in the future. These are all things that are going to contribute to the local economy. And I would, Mr. Bordeaux, when, when available or whenever it is appropriate, I would like to speak about the open intoxicant issue too. I, I do not mean to, to hide that. It was a mistake. It was in my vehicle, no doubt. It was, I wasn't drinking and driving. I did, they gave me sobriety tests, they gave me, they breathalyzed me and everything. I was camping, it was leftover. It was in the back. It was, it was technically in a cup holder within reach. That's why I got that ticket. But more importantly, I paid it. It's been over a year and a half since that happened. There's been no additional issues since then. I've also been a licensed bartender for over twelve years without a single incident of serving underage, to underagers, without a single instant violation with the, with the local law enforcement, and as a matter of fact, I maintain a very positive relationship with that local law enforcement.
Are any of the board members here with you today?
There is, I have board members with me from the Oregon Ice Arena, from the Oregon Youth Hockey, and also the head coach of the Wisconsin Whalers.
Could, could we hear from?
Sure.
The board members?
Yeah.
So what I would like is a better sense of how the board of directors views this revenue stream. I'd like a better sense of how, now that the board of directors has signed on as members of this corporation, the Oregon, Oregon Ice Arena, Inc.
Yep.
I'd like a better understanding of how you plan to exercise your responsibilities with regards to being a board member and the oversight.
Sure. We, we really.
Excuse me, you would need to identify yourself.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Jason Leatherberry, one eighty-five Walnut Street, Oregon, Wisconsin. As a board member and a youth hockey parent as well, we took this really, it was a tough approach for us because we really wanted Sean to do it and do the restaurant, and with the lease stuff, it wasn't going to work. We've approached a couple of different ideas, and the one we came up with was as a board, let's us go together and apply. We'll let Sean be the go-between, between the village, the police, between everybody, because we trust him as a coach and a parent and everything else. And we really just, as far as the revenue and that goes, it was, it's a big thing to have the Whalers at our rink. And like Sean stated, it's not just the money, our rink, it's as the hotel's built. They have their games on Friday, Saturday night, and there's a carryover, so they play the same team twice. Right now, that team goes to stay in Stoughton or Pittsburgh. They don't stay in Oregon, they don't eat here, they don't do anything here. They play their game, they're done at eight thirty, nine o'clock, they leave, go somewhere else. We'd like to keep them here, keep them at the rink, the parents at the rink, maybe have a couple of beers and a burger after their game, or whatever, you know, it's, it, it's a give and take. We don't want, we're not looking for people to come to the rink to drink. That's not what we want. It's, oh, our kids have practice tonight, I have two boys that play, we have three hours to spend at the rink, let's have a burger and a beer, and then we'll go home after practice. That's really what we're looking at it as far as the revenue stream goes. It's not, it's not going to kill us. It's going to hurt us as far as like the Whalers go, because I don't think they are the only team in their league that doesn't serve alcohol, or we are. So it is tough to keep up with the league as far as getting fans to come, and it's, it is a major, it is a big issue at our rink.
And how would you envision the board managing or working with Sean if he was the agent and, and was running his restaurant?
Sure.
To make sure that Sean was running it in a compliant, responsible way?
Sure, we would, we'd open, we'd love anybody to come do open checks on us, that's fine. We will, as a board, we'll set aside, I'm sure, at least, I know there's three applicants on it, I was one of them. We will meet, I'm sure our three, the three of us, I think it was Jen Williams, I, and I'm not sure who the third one was, and make sure that everything is done the way it's supposed to be done. There's not, it's not just Sean going to have to go at it on his own. I mean, we are a board, we do have, I think, seven members, and we will, we meet monthly just like everybody else, and we will do our best to make sure that everything is on the up and up all the time.
I appreciate that, Jason.
Oh, no problem.
And does anybody else have questions for Jason? Because I would be interested in hearing, you've made the trip, I'd be interested in hearing what you have to say.
Yeah, one quick question.
Sure.
Did I hear you're willing to take, how, start with a license only for Whalers games?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that was not an issue. We're, and then we were, we would look at maybe, you know, projecting it out to when Oasis is gone. Because there was, at, at the school board meeting, there was quite a few members who said, once we're gone, it's, we don't.
Yeah, it's not their concern.
Yeah, we're not worried about it anymore.
Yeah.
And so, you know, at this time, we, that's really what we were looking for. Right now was, let's just get the Whalers going and see what we can do with that, and we'll project it forward from there, okay?
As I explained, we would be willing to take it as a, as a restricted license. We'd like the opportunity. We do want to do things the right way. We want to have the opportunity to prove it to this boards, to the Village of Oregon, that we will do things the right way, that we will have security officers in place to prevent the over-serving, to prevent underagers, to do all of our ID carding. I have twelve years' experience myself. We would hire only licensed bartenders who meet the characterization test provided by this board. When you approve other bartenders, all of these people, myself included, would complete Responsible Beverage Servers class. I have recently completed it. I completed it twelve years ago as a requirement on my old application. That is something that we want to make sure that we are able to offer. That is something that we want to make sure that we are able to offer the best facilities we can to our children. I'm a coach at Oregon Youth Hockey. I'm not doing this because I want to make a bunch of money off of it. It's to provide the best possible facilities to our kids, to keep the Wisconsin Whalers around. They're excellent role models. They're 18, 19, 20-year-old kids that aspire to go to college or to go to the next level of hockey. That's what those guys are here for, and that's why it's important to keep that rink open, to keep their facilities alive. Our Zamboni that resurfaces, the ice is almost as old as I am. It's from 1982. That thing's going to need to be replaced sooner or later. And all of these things are, come from capital improvement, from the revenues generated by this. But we are willing to start small. We are willing to be under the microscope. We are willing to, we invite anybody to challenge our system.
Any other questions for these two gentlemen right now? Okay, so I think the coach of the Whalers would like to talk. Is that right?
Did you have anything that you wanted to say, or you said that you were the youth director?
I'm part, I'm a member of the Youth Hockey Board.
The Youth Hockey Board?
Yep.
I would just like to talk about the Whalers' involvement in all this.
I'm sorry, you need to identify yourself for the record, please.
My name is Tom McDermott, and I am the head coach and general manager and pod owner of the Wisconsin Whalers. And we just wanted to come up and talk a little bit about, we're not looking to have a zoo in there during our games. We're not looking to have a drunken atmosphere or anything. I've talked to the police chief about security, and we are in, we talked a little bit tonight about it, where we would like to almost pay for an overtime officer at our games in uniform, to where, like, we would pay the village for four hours of overtime for an officer to be there. And we want to do it the right way. We want to keep it all calm. We just, we are the only team around in the league that doesn't have the income from the alcohol. When we were in Madison at Hartmeyer Ice Arena, we had it and stuff like that. It's not a lot. We're looking at maybe $10,000 to $15,000 a year, but for us, that's huge. You know, our budget is about $250,000 a year, and any way we can get it down, it's helpful. You know, if we can get $10,000 to $12,000 a year, that's half of our ice costs here. The one thing that, not to say you're wrong or anything like that, but we do use a lot of things in town, like Pizza Pit. Last year, delivered 15 pizzas every game for the visiting team when they left and five for us. We try to use the community. This year, the Whalers are going to be running the youth hockey tryouts. The kids will be on the ice. Myself and my assistants are going to be the ones evaluating the players. We are out there at practices every week. We have kids on the ice with the youth hockey. We're trying to really build a community failing here. It's just, and it's not a lot of money, but it will help us immensely. I mean, our bus cost is about $38,000 a year. If we can knock that down, stuff like that, it's all just going to help us be able to do more and more around here and stay here. And if you have any questions for me or anything like that, the league, the organization, I'd gladly answer them.
There are questions? So one question I have, and we just looked at one of these, and we waited until the next, until next Monday, because there are only four people here. If we do this tonight or if we wait, I mean, my recommendation is to wait till all seven people are here.
The only thing I would ask is, our home opener, excuse me, home opener is this Friday, and that's why we were trying to get here tonight to hopefully get it for this game this weekend. Because then we go on the road, and actually, we're on the road for the next six weeks after this.
So can we entertain a conditional single-use permit? Special events?
There is a, is it the picnic license? So one-
Peggy can authorize it.
So the clerk has the authority, however, that one gets a little complicated because the, it's only, the only groups that are eligible, I don't think they'd be eligible.
A bona fide club.
It has to be a bona fide.
Well, the one thing we were going to ask, if we did bring up the picnic thing, is if youth hockey could be the ones to do the picnic.
Well, so, one of the clubs might qualify as a bona fide club that could apply for the license, and in fact, I think that's how it was handled in the past.
Yeah.
So that's an option. The challenge is, so, I think the clerk has the authority to issue it, but clerk would in all probability not issue this one without the board's blessing. So between now and Friday, I think the clerk would need direction from the board as to whether the board would be supportive of issuing a, what's called picnic license for Friday night to that or to that club.
And I understand completely with what you said to the other people in postponing it to the next one. We have no problem with that, but-
If we get you passed this weekend, you don't need to hear from us again for nine weeks, is what I heard you say.
Uh, next home, my game is either, whatever, the first Friday in November is-
So that would get us plenty of time to pull together as a whole board. That was my only thought.
My question would be to the board, and I understand the whole seven for the license and stuff like that, but talking about the picnic license, if the four that are here located, do you think that would be good enough?
Well, uh-
Because it would be a majority.
I think ultimately, this is going to be Peggy's call. She's the clerk, so if she's comfortable with direction from-
No, I'd give direction.
Yeah, if she's comfortable with the direction she gets, she'd have the authority to issue the license.
I'd be comfortable recommending that to Peggy that-
I'd second that.
That she issued a picnic license, and then that gives us a chance to deliberate as a full board on whether we want to commit to the full license.
So just understanding procedurally, there'd still have to be now a new application for that license. We'd have to be in fast to the clerk.
From a club, from a bona fide club.
From a bona fide club.
Uh, you, when you say club, do you mean like all of youth hockey, or just like the Bannums or the Pee Wees or something like that?
You guys will have to discuss who the applicant would be.
Have you done this before?
Yes, I have.
So you're familiar.
So if you can do it the same way you did the last time, that's probably best. And then Peggy, are you saying that that has to be routed to the police department before you can issue it? So the sooner you get in, the better, because she's going to ask the police department to review the application, see if he has any concerns before it's actually issued.
What do you think about that, Steve?
Yeah, I'm okay with that, which is a softening of position for me. You probably are aware of that. I have a real concern with alcohol being served when there are youth hockey things going on. I don't think that's a good way to do it. Doesn't happen at youth soccer, youth baseball, youth basketball. I just don't think that's good, and I'm not going to go along here, but, you know, alcohol is really abused in this state, and role models are important. You guys have presented well. I appreciate that. That's important. I think people are getting the message that we have a pretty tight ship here in how we do the alcohol stuff.
And we, you know what, we'd like it that way, because we don't want to have, trust me, when we go to certain rinks and there's 2,000 people in it, and we're getting hit by beer bottles and stuff like that, no. We're not looking for that here at all. We're not looking to have a zoo in there.
That would be a problem. And not, not everybody who's come before us has been that way, has been that sincere about it and that concerned about doing things right. So it's good, in my mind, that message is getting-
Like I always tell my kids on the team, we want to be the class on and off the ice of the league. And that goes for our home games, having security and everything under control, to when we travel and stuff like that also.
Yeah. So I'm okay with the picnic license for Friday night, and we have time to talk about it. You can come back, not, doesn't have to be all of you, but at least Sean can be back to talk to us and hear more about that and so on.
Would you like, also, just so I know, like, there's been a lot of questions about keeping the bear on the premises. We have made sure we have a place that we can keep it off-premise, and it would only come there when school's not in session or anything like that.
What I would say is for this time, you get the picnic license, you have Friday night, the beer comes in, you serve it, and it goes out.
Yep.
It's a one-time thing. We'll talk about the conditions that we'll have going forward. We'll have time to do that, because you don't need it until the end of November, so. And we'll keep that, we'll get it done, so you know what's going to happen, yes, no, and what the conditions are.
Well, I appreciate your time, and thank you. And do you want us to drop the application off with the police department? Or do we give it to you guys to send it over?
Do you want the application to start here or at the police department?
Yes, it starts with the clerk.
John said that.
Okay, I was just asking.
The board members are set. We're fine with that for this Friday, so you're set for Friday.
Thank you very much.
So have a good opener.
Can you have it tomorrow? Yes. What was that? It'll, even if we walk, I'll walk it myself over.
We were just talking about when it would make sense for the application to come back before the board, the application for the license, and October 3rd is available?
Or the 10th, one of those two.
Or the 10th. Rather than next Monday, because it looks like we've got a lot on next Monday already.
Yeah, I'd say October 3rd.
October 3rd to come back for the-
October 30th.
October is perfect. Thank you.
I want to mention one more thing. Last year, I got in the mail a couple complimentary tickets to come to a game. I did not go to a game. I meant to call.
They're still good this year.
Well, I didn't, because I can't receive those.
Oh, okay.
That's not legal.
Well, we weren't trying to do anything wrong there.
I'm not accusing you of that. I just want you to know, I wasn't just being rude. I couldn't, I couldn't show up, so.
But basically, we do try and do like a police and fire night and stuff like that. Is that legal or illegal in town?
I think it's going to be a problem to offer police, village employees, something that isn't offered to the community in general. Our public, our public employees and our public officials are not really allowed to accept gifts and things of that nature.
Okay.
And that's a state, that's a state law. That's not us, that's not us making life difficult for you guys.
Nope, and we won't. I apologize that you got them. I, we didn't know.
No, please don't. You didn't know. It's fine. It's not a problem.
Is there anyone that has any questions about the league or organization or anything like that?
Well, I think it's a good sign you're back a second year.
Yeah.
So good for you. And thanks.
We're lucky to have-
Well, we-
Pretty solid footing.
I'll be honest with you, we tried coming here four years ago, but the rink had some issues.
Yeah.
And that's why we went to Hartmeyer for two years, and as soon as the rink fixed their issues, we came. This is the place we always wanted to move to.
Yeah. Good.
Did you have anything that you wanted to say?
I'll get the picnic license, and thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Thanks, Sean.
So we're still have an open public here. Anybody else that wants to address the board on this topic right now?
Jeff Grineer, I just wanted to reiterate that, you know, we did have a license for five years with no problems whatsoever.
Never should have gave it up.
Never should have gave it up. That wasn't my call, so. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew about that, and if there's any other questions about, and this was the way that we had set it up before. We had the board applied for it, and we had an agent. This is exactly the way that we did it before too, so.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Jeff.
Anyone else?
Excuse me, I'm so sorry for interrupting. Did anybody find a cell phone? My granddaughter lost her cell phone.
I have not seen a cell phone here.
That's okay. I don't see it anywhere either.
Okay.
But thank you.
You're welcome.
So sorry for interrupting.
That's okay. That's fine to ask that.
You can call it and see if you can hear it. That's what I do.
Yeah, I know.
I know. We do that at our house. Mine's mine.
Okay, so I'm going to close that public hearing.
You want to take a vote, you want to table this too?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
To October 3rd.
We have a motion to table this.
So move to table till the 3rd of October?
Yeah.
I second that.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes.
Yeah, if we could go to planning, there's a couple gentlemen in the back there.
Do all the planning or just start with Doran?
It's totally up to you, Steve. How you want to do it.
And that is, okay, so now we're going to jump ahead one more time to the Planning Commission from September 1st. Thrusty Carpenter is the chair of that. She's not able to be here tonight. We're going to item four, which is for Doran Hardware. That's what you gentlemen are here for, right? Yeah, see, they can hear me back there too. That's good. So I'm going to read that as you come forward.
See, can I just, I'm starting every moment of time. Because we don't have two-thirds of the board, we're only going to be able to do the second reading tonight.
Okay.
So that was a good catch by one of the Jeffs. I don't know if one of them said that to me. So.
Okay, so I'm going to read the item. Discussion, possible action regarding approving and amending the current planned development district. PDD zoning at 131 West Richards Road through proposed general development plan. And the recommended motion is to approve ordinance number 16-29, amend current planned development district, zoning 131 West Richards Road through proposed general development plan. So I'm bringing that forward as a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So if you want to go ahead with a little description of what you have going, so the main thing is so it goes on TV, so people that are watching are aware of it. Any questions we might have?
So my name is Jerry Berkwin, and I'm about to mention four, who are the project architects working with Keith on the project in Doran's. And the project in general is a redevelopment of the existing Doran Hardware site. So we're looking to actually develop that site, create a mixed use there. So rather than just being the hardware store as it is right now, and there's a pharmacy toward the back, we're going to actually redevelop the site, so we'll have a commercial mixed use out along Main Street. So that'll be three stories. It'll be commercial area in the first floor, two floors of residential above that. Then as you come around on Richards, there'll be another commercial building at that point. And we're keeping all the businesses in operation at the same time, so the last step then is actually on the hardware and on the pharmacy. So when we get phase two done, then the pharmacy can move over into that one or the original building. Then the last step, we'll tear down the existing Doran Hardware and build a new Doran Hardware actually on the other corner of the site itself. So we're looking to actually get the general development plan approved, then we'll come back for the specific information plan, and that's when you'll see all the drawings and engineering, everything for the final details, but we're just getting approval for the concept, and we're trying to do it on the site itself right now.
Okay. Are there questions?
I think it's a fantastic project. I just have a comment. It's going to be a really, it's going to be a gem as far as the entrance to the community goes, so thank you for your vision and for being willing to invest in the community. And personally, I've been talking a lot about low to moderate income housing, and when I see, you know, development that's going to include studio and one bedroom, I think about that target market and something that's going to be affordable for singles and for elderly seniors. So again, thank you for that.
Thank you. We're excited. I think it's going to be a good addition to the village, so thank you.
Yeah, I've had several people say that they really like what this will do to our north entrance to the village. It looks great. People are really excited about it, so.
Thank you.
Good for you for your vision and willingness to jump in and do this.
Thank you.
You bet. So anything else? Anybody else? So we just, is our motion stated?
So the, so the motion actually is only going to be, we can't adopt the-
Right.
It's a motion to waive the first reading? Because this is the first time it's before the board.
Correct.
the board.
Correct. Yep.
And then, so it'll come back to the, you at, at your next meeting?
Yep.
For a second reading and possible adoption.
Yeah.
No, you gotta bring that back next week.
Yes.
Yep. And the, the reason for that is we, this takes two-thirds of the board and we only have four people here. So.
Oh, that's fine.
We've said a long time.
It's okay.
Sorry. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Long wait for a short time, but you got it.
That's okay. That's our girls. Thank you.
Hard to do it. Okay, so now, see how easy it is if you're not selling alcohol.
If Doran wanted to sell alcohol, this would be a problem.
Doran Hardware and Tap House.
Okay, so we are back at item four, approval of minutes. We have minutes from July 18th through 2016, Joint Village Board and Plan Commission Meeting.
So move?
Second.
I just have a comment. If I read the minutes right, Darlene motioned in second in the adjournment. So if we could just.
I'm pretty good.
Add my name down there somewhere. I think that'd make it read right.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next we have is approval of vouchers. We have vouchers tonight in the General Operating Fund in amount of $2,127,237.19 for approval.
So move? Second?
Thank you. Questions?
No jury bodies.
We missed Jerry.
Jerry's gone.
Yeah. Okay. So again, we have a motion second to approve vouchers in amount of $2,127,237.19. Roll call, please.
Grenier?
Yes.
Pudrow?
Yes.
Staten?
Yes.
Brethauer?
Yes.
Thank you. That carries. Item six is community input. It's allow those members of the public to provide information to the board. Anyone wish to address the board? Phil, welcome.
Phil Harms, 895 South Perry Parkway, former trustee. I'm here tonight for item number, I think, 94 concerning the one and a half percent raise. I have questions and I challenge the board to reconfigure that. What's the total dollar amount that you're asking across the board there, Mike or Peggy? What's the total dollar amount that's gonna be dispersed in that one and a half percent raise?
About $9,000.
$9,000? That's one and a half percent top to bottom. One and a half for top, one and a half for the bottom, probably, right?
Just across the board.
Across the board. I, I, I would ask, I would challenge the board, and I've always been an advocate of dispersing those raises to give the bulk of it to the low end. Dane County recently did a, another one, not similar, because they wanted to bring their employees up to a cost of living. Granted, the cost of living for village employees here, the base wage is higher than what the county was dealing with. And I would ask the board here to consider, when it comes up on the agenda, and I've been sitting here for almost two and a half hours, Stu, and you lost a member tonight. You lost a member tonight. Cause he feels the same way I do. The low end needs to get more of a raise than the top end. If you want to take that $9,000, divide it out to the number of employees that you have, and then give it out accordingly that way. Somebody is making $95,000, $98,000, $100,000. In my view, can get a raise, but they don't need a $1,500 raise or a $1,000 raise. The way it's written, it's a 1.5% for everybody, correct?
That's correct.
So how, $9,000 does it cover everybody, is it?
It's, it's just, it's for the remainder part of the year.
Pardon?
It's for the last part of the year.
So that nine thou, okay, that would, the 9,000 would cover.
Right.
Normally, I think the last time we looked at this was 22 or $30,000 when it got raised. I think it was around two, 2%, something like that.
But that's for the whole year.
Pardon? That's for the whole year. I realize that. So I would challenge the board to disperse that equally for the low employees to the top end. I don't know how many employees that would be you have in a county, in a village, 60? That would affect this?
Not that many, cause it would not include the patrol officer.
Right. Say, say it's 40. Say it's 40 employees.
For the firefighters?
No.
Correct.
This is just village employees.
For the library?
But libraries doing it by themselves.
Yeah, libraries doing their own.
Yeah.
So if you take that $9,000 divided by 40 employees, everybody would get an equal share of it. That's my, what I'm advocating for tonight.
Okay. Thanks, Phil, and thanks for waiting.
Yeah.
It's a long wait.
It's interesting.
That's right, it is.
It's interesting.
Okay.
Keep your mic close, Doug.
Okay.
Cause we can't hear you on TV.
All right. I'll try to remember.
Thank you.
Item seven, proclamations and announcements. Item A, board comments.
I have a comment. So many of you know that Chief Milnerick has resigned his position because he's gonna go up, up north, I believe, Bosco Bell, is it?
No.
No.
Belleville.
Belleville.
By Green Bay.
Where his mom, where his wife grew up and become the chief of police there. So in the, in the interim, Darlene and I and the village Fire EMS commission have been busy figuring out what we're gonna do. And we've extended and it's been accepted and offered to Glenn Linsmire to be an interim chief for the, for the village. And this is excellent news for us at the village. Glenn has a lot of experience, many, many years of experience as the Blooming Grove Fire Chief. He comes very highly recommended from everybody that we could talk to, including Chief Milnerick. He currently works with the state and he's a past president of the Wisconsin State Fire Chiefs Association. So this is an individual that's very experienced and very knowledgeable in the fire service. Meantime, the commission has also directed the joint board to start a search for a full-time fire chief and directed them in a way that, you know, Glenn is certainly welcome to apply and will be considered, but he's not, he's not necessarily gonna be a walk-on for the full-time chief. So we're gonna be opening up the, the hiring process to any candidate that would want to be considered as full-time fire chief. And we hope to have that wrapped up by the end of this year. So beginning of next year, we hope to have a new fire chief full-time for the village. So this is good news for everybody and it allows us to maintain a professional fire department without skipping a beat.
Yes. Very nice it works that way. Good.
So thank you, Chief Glenn, and I look forward to introducing him to you all at some point.
Thanks. Any other board comments? Item B is staff comments. Item one, Wisconsin Election Commission update. Peggy?
So I did have a handout for you guys. I don't know if you have any questions on that handout, but I was just gonna highlight a few things with regard to some changes. One of those is a 10-day residency requirement. In the past, or even for the last election, there was a 28-day residency requirement. That will change for November. Another one of the items that has changed is university, college, or technical college IDs can be used for photo, for, for the photo ID requirement. And then, another major change for our office is the lift of restriction of the number of days in-person absentee voting can take place. I don't remember how long it's been in place, but in the recent past few years, we have only been able to do absentee voting two weeks prior to the election. That has opened up to what it was prior. Pretty much as soon as we get the ballots, we can have absentee voting. And we have set hours for absentee voting in our office. Every office is gonna be different. I have checked on the clerk's list and they're kind of bouncing all over the place with what they're gonna do. But our hours will begin September 26th. And from September 26th through October 28th, we will have a regular hours from 7:30 to 4:30. And then the last week before the election, we will have extended hours. So that would start on Halloween, October 31st through Friday, November 4th. And we'll have, our extended hours will be from 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. The Monday before the election, November 7th, we will not have registration or absentee voting, and that's per state law. So.
Thank you. Any questions for Peggy? It's nice to see more people have more chances to vote in my estimation. Item two, upcoming meetings. Mr. Grace?
Next board meeting is next month. I'm sorry, next month. I'm sorry.
Next month sounds good.
Excuse me. I'm sure you wish it was next month.
It's October.
Yeah, I know. I know. I should give you that opportunity. And let us remind you about the joint meeting we're having on Wednesday, September 28th with the towns. That's our annual budget meeting with the towns in Brooklyn, on the senior center in the fire district. And then just a reminder that, I know I sent out that survey about possibly moving the, the October 17th board meeting. We're just gonna keep it on the 17th. So it's easy to remember. Just be here three Mondays in a row in October for the board and the budget meeting, so.
Okay. Good, thank you. So goes to item A, communication miscellaneous business. Item A, discussion of board members attending September 15th, Chamber of Commerce luncheon from 11 to 1. That's preparedness for active shooter and violence within the workplace and community. And this has been noticed as a board meeting. Anything else you need to say about that? So we're all aware of that. Item B, discussion possible action resolution number 16-26 requesting exemption from the county library tax. So we need a motion?
So move.
Jeff had the second.
You bet.
Great.
So I like to loop things around and I like to make sure that when we're talking about things that we connect dots where possible. So if I remember right, Nikki, and I want you to please correct me or at least weigh in, tell me, matter of fact, I'm gonna flip it around. I'm just gonna ask you. So tell me what the impact of the current library facility on Oregon passing the 10,000 mark, cause I think Chief turned in a report that said we're at 9,700, has on the library tax, the exemption of the county library tax?
Sure. So, so we can exempt from the library tax if we are, if we pay a minimum amount of money and we maintain the Dane County standards, which are set at the county level. And when we hit the 10,000 mark, which is not too many people away, and we have some very exciting building projects going on, it may even come before 2020, we will be held to a higher standard. We'll need to have more materials and some additional staffing, et cetera. If we are not able to meet the minimum Dane County standards, it is possible to get a, like a temporary pass, but you, there's only like three conditions that will work. One of them is natural disaster is struck and that's why you aren't able to meet this. The second one is that you are currently in a building project. You have started a building project. And the third, I forget what it is, cause it's very rare, but it's on the website. So if one of those is the case, then you can get sort of a, a three-year window to get to where you need to be. If not, then you have to both pay the tax, or the tax and run your library. But you can skip paying the tax if you pay, if you are willing to give this fraction of what it costs to run the library and you can meet the standards. That's the tricky part, because of course it costs more than the minimal amount to be able to run a library at the standard level.
So in your opinion, could we, could we meet the qualifications for exemption in the current facility?
I think it would become dangerous.
What do you mean by that?
We'd need so many more materials that you would have things on the very low, very, very low, and on the very, very top shelf.
And actually, Jeff, we're gonna have a, Nikki, I should say, is gonna have a full report.
Woo, you're gonna be amazed.
At the next board meeting. We're gonna do it tonight, but we thought it was gonna be long. Guess that means it's gonna be long too. We're actually gonna go through some of your, you, go ahead and ask your questions, but we're gonna go ahead and, we're gonna do an overview of what space in the library.
I just wanna make sure, cause this particular board item will, will only come up again this time next year, is my guess. So I just don't want to, in my mind, this is a building process. And, and as I'm taking all of this information and I'm putting it together for myself.
Yep.
And so what I was really looking for was what Nikki just shared, cause I'm trying to cement in some things that I think I've picked up along the way. But a report from Nikki next week would, would do the same thing.
We're gonna be talking about this.
Illuminate and lighten.
Quite a bit, over the next, next year, I would say.
Yeah. And, and I, I very much feel for you and everyone else, because there are many moving parts. And you hear that there are different standards from different entities that we're facing. And so I will do my best next week to try to put it together in a cohesive fashion. But of course, please ask any questions then, before, or after.
I'm gonna put, I'm gonna have Nikki's report between you two liquor license discussions.
Oh, my heavens.
And the other piece of that is that, no, this is an opportunity for the community to get educated right along with us, you know?
Yeah.
At some point, this might come to a referendum or something. And all the work that we're doing here to educate ourselves through the cable channel educates the community as a whole.
For example, how many people know about chapter 43, right, Nikki?
Certainly not as much as I know these days.
Will it be a quiz next week?
No, I, you're gonna get a really good article from the Legal Wisconsin.
Municipalities.
Yeah, written by Matt's wife about chapter 43. It's, it's the, the article to go to for questions about it. It's, it's what governs the library and library board.
Yeah, it's a chapter entirely dedicated to how public, what public libraries have to adhere to in the state of Wisconsin. It's unusual compared to some other states that we have an entire chapter dedicated to it. So kudos to your wife for putting that all together. It's, it's an unusual scenario in that sense. But yeah, it's a great article and I shared it with, the library now has a finance subcommittee to help us plan for a solid future. And that's, I shared the same article with them. So.
I'm trying to remember the, from the board pack, and I'm trying to remember the dollar impact of that exemption to the village.
The minimum appropriation that we need to.
No, the, I read, I read in one of the attachments, there was the actual, was it the actual resolution?
There's a, a document.
Oh, you mean, oh, on the second page of the resolution?
It states what the impact to the village is in terms of the exemption, what that means to us in dollars.
So the minimum, if, if I understand your question, which I may or may not, the minimum amount that the village could give to, for library purposes in 2017 and be in compliance would be $333,523. Now, last year, the appropriation was more than that. It was 505,927. So it's not the full amount that it takes to run the library, but it's the minimum amount to clear the hurdle of that part of the Dane County standards.
So.
For that year.
Can you, can, can you tell me, cause I'm still, I'm getting a little bit lost as the money moves around. And this happens all the time with Lisa, you know, county accounting and private business accounting are two different things. What, what does this mean to me as a taxpayer? Say that we lose the Dane County tax exemption, goes away because we can't meet the, the minimum qualifications that it requires. And so now we're subject to it. What would the cost to the village be?
Well, we would, we would lose the, the.
Dane County payment.
Payment, which, which, well, you have to either do something with the services at the library, but the problem is you're required to do things at the library. Would, we'd have to raise taxes to cover it.
It would be pretty substantial. I want to say for last, for 2015, it was maybe about a third of our cost of running.
So it'd be, it'd be more expensive as a, as a village taxpayer.
So when you say.
This is a better deal.
Yeah. So is it like on the order of $200,000? I mean, are you about a $600,000 budget?
Um, we are in that range, yeah. We're around there. It's a little bit more.
And then that would have to get spread out amongst the taxpayers to.
Yeah.
Cover that difference.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience. And thank you for your patience.
Thanks for your questions.
Trying to weed through this.
Helped us all.
No, those are actually good questions even to bring up next week when, you know, Genie and Jer and everybody else is here just to talk about it.
Yeah.
Cause I'm sure every, everyone is, in the whole wide world is a little foggy on how this all works.
I'd like to think that I'm more representative of the group than the exception when it comes to my knowledge. Thank you for confirming that.
After three or four years, I usually are.
Sorry, that maybe didn't come out as it was meant to, but, no offense intended.
Not the sharpest tool in the shed, but I'm in there.
You are.
We won't vote on that, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? So again, we have a resolution number 16-26 requesting exemption from the county library tax for the motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item C, discussion of South Burr Oak near Bethel Greenacre Park, emergency cover replacement and possible board action. Possible motion award contract of Iowa grant trucking in amount of $44,000, funding from 2016 borrowing, developer stormwater fund, and street improvement fund.
So move.
Second.
And I want to thank Jeff for the very thoughtful write-up that fully explained exactly what this project's about.
So if you have any questions, so I don't have to, or if you've been by there, you might have seen it. I think the alternative that we've selected, I think is the best long-term. And we'll serve that area for a very long time.
Thank you.
It's unfortunate, kinda has to happen in this timeframe, but the storm kinda forced our hand on this one.
We've had a lot bigger problems with stormwater.
Exactly. This is.
This looked pretty good to me.
[laughing]
Anything else?
Any questions about the funding that, you know, we're, it's, we saved some money on the high school project. We're taking some money from there and then we have some developer stormwater money. And then the street work will be paid out in 405, which is street improvements, so it's a combination.
Good plan.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We did D, E, F, and G. M H is information only. Wisconsin, Wisconsin Department Administration's 2016 preliminary population estimate of 9,797. We're getting close to magic 10,000.
Put a couple apartment buildings into Nikki's point.
Yeah.
Well, and I'll just point out that even though we're in estimate, if I may, I'm sorry, I jumped in there, Steve.
No, you're fine.
Thank you. Even though this is an estimate year, it's not, you might think that, okay, we wouldn't need to be in compliance until the official census in 2020. That's not how they calculate that. They go in between years by the estimate. So if between now and 2020, we hit that and we don't have the building project in place, we might be in a more difficult position. But it's not, because we'll have to get things going faster.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that information.
Can I interject a question? A while ago, we were given approval to update the population signs. And we were updating them to.
At least the one that says 1,700 over there on the screen.
And, and those are actually, I think we're waiting for the proof spec on those. But I guess the question would, you want us to, if, if we still have time to incorporate them into the new signs, do we want them to show the 97, 97?
It seems to me like we would.
Yeah.
Is that pretty solid?
10,000 and save yourself some money in the next three years.
It's, it's the, it is the estimate we ha, estimate we have.
Okay.
It's, you know, what, because when they took it, it's actually probably a little long, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
You know, we'll, we'll cross over ten thousand.
Well, I'd say, I, I think we're at ninety-seven, eighty-five, I think in, in the one.
We only got two hundred to go.
Well.
That's not much, is it?
Yeah, I think it, I think it was, yeah.
By the end of this year, we might have it.
Maybe.
Just make it ten thousand.
Yeah.
Right.
Save us some.
Then we'll get it.
No, you know, that, you know.
Like when you're buying furniture, it's ninety-nine, ninety-nine.
Yeah, right.
Not ten thousand.
I, I would put, I would put this, this is what I would put on the signs.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we all okay with that?
Yeah.
If we can get that, as long as they haven't been ordered yet.
Yep.
I'll do that.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Unless we're gonna wait until the end of the year, it might be ten thousand.
I think one of the problems that we had actually, well, now when he would say.
Okay, item I, historic walking tours, the first tour, Saturday, September twenty-four, from eleven to noon. Starts at the Welcome Center. Randy Glash and two members of the Historical Society will be giving the walking tour. So we thank them and hopefully people take advantage of that.
That's really nice, Bill.
And then item J, resignation from the library board, Mary Jane Nesbit. Any comments here Nikki?
Um, well, we will, um, we would like to very much thank Mary Jane Nesbit. She's been an excellent addition to, um, the library board and we appreciate all the thoughtfulness she put into every meeting that, um, she was with us. Um, I, um, she, uh, happened to be our one, um, village board member that, um, is not, or I'm not sorry, village board, library board member who is not from the village. She's from, she's from the town. Um, we're allowed, um, up to two non-village representatives on the library board. Um, it's whomever you appoint, um, but that might be something to take into consideration and I'm happy to, you know, um, at your convenience, put some possibilities forward. But, um, it might be something we'd wanna consider is, um, continuing to have a variety of inputs. Since we serve many.
Good, thank you. Do we list this on the website? Do we have this vacancy also?
We could.
We done that, done the position, okay. Is that all right Nikki?
Sure.
Put on the website?
Yeah, it, it, I don't know if you, how you would like to process that at, um, if you want. Maybe people could contact me for more information so they have an idea of what the commitment would involve.
Nikki, why don't you send me an email, how you want it on the webpage?
Okay, I'll think about that. Thank you.
Yeah, we have a short application, right, for positions that they'll, they'll, okay, good. Thank you. Item mail, villages, two thousand sixteen, mill and overlay work, anticipate start September nineteenth. Uh, letters have been mailed to residents impacted by the work. And that's listed at Walnut Street, Ash Street to South Burr Oak and Walnut Street, Bethel Court and North to South Burr Oak, Bethel Court, Cedar Drive, Hickory Court, Amanda Court and South Main Street from eight oh nine South Main to eight sixty-two South Main.
The only correction is I do have a small error in my, in my letter. Walnut Street, Bethel Court and South were, to South Burr Oak.
That's a pretty big error.
Huh?
That's a pretty big error.
I agree.
You're going the wrong direction.
But I will, I will tell you, we did mail it to all the residents that were around on that, that portion. So I, I failed it a few phone calls. People have been supportive. That's an area that's been need some TLC in a while, so.
Yeah.
It'll be good.
Good.
Do they have time? Do they have a time where, where all that's gonna be done?
Yeah, actually there'll be, our contractor, Penandolan, will be notifying people with, with, uh, usually put either door hangers or they'll put signs in the median that, or in the terrace that tell them they can park. It gives them an idea that they're eminently going to be there. Uh, the purpose of my letter was really just to raise their level of awareness that it's coming and to kinda work with the contractors and, and helping it go smoothly.
Also going back to, uh, what we're doing down there on, uh.
Burr Oak and, or, uh, Elmond Main Street?
Yeah, and when will that be all finished?
Um, that will all be finished in approximately, I'm estimating about a one month.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on that?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we'll go to item N, discussion possible action wastewater treatment plant phosphorus analyzer. Uh, recommend a motion to approve public works to proceed with the procurement and installation of the phosphorus analyzer and building skated programming electro wiring and concrete pad to be located at the wastewater treatment plant. Estimated cost is thirty-nine thousand four hundred forty-five dollars.
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
Thanks again for, you always put really great write-ups in the packet and I just really appreciate it because I feel like I come prepared to act.
Sure. Thank you.
So thank you.
Well, and, and that's, I can pass that off, onto our staff as well, who provide me the nice information. Um, just as a, uh, point of, uh, information, we did get costs from another vendor as well and that cost was gonna add additional equipment, including some small pumps and some other stuff that was gonna add about ten thousand dollars on to what we would be paying here. So, um, we did, we did look into this and, uh, this is something that was actually been budgeted. It's a little over budget, but it's been budgeted.
Good, thank you. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Jeff. So that takes us, item nine, reported committees. Uh, the first is personnel, public safety and protection. August twenty-second, two thousand sixteen, chaired by trustee Harper, who is not able to be here. So I'll take number one, uh, discussion possible action regarding Dave Franks' request to install a sidewalk on the north side of South Perry Parkway between South Main and Union Road. Uh, recommend a motion to approve a task order prepared by Rook Milkie for this in the amount of forty-five hundred dollars, which would review the possible installation of sidewalk on South Perry Parkway.
Second move.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, that's a motion. So we got a second. Questions on this? We all heard the presentation Dave gave and agreed. Kids don't always walk where their ass too much.
This is real similar. In fact, it's almost, uh, cookie cutter to what the study we're getting done on, on Wolf Street over there from the other end of the town.
And, and so in number seven, we.
Yeah.
Jeff and I caught that, there, there's no need to contact the highway department, um, just so you know.
And I actually struck that, you know, line through on the contract and gave, uh, to Peggy.
Good thinking. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We've done two and three. Item four, discussion possible action regarding two thousand sixteen market wage adjustments for village employees. Uh, the motion coming to us is to approve the one and a half percent wage adjustment, excluding police uni, union and library employees effective nine eleven sixteen.
So I will make the motion, and I have a question.
So you second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you.
So Mike, um, refresh my memory, when was the last time that, uh, the village employees received a pay increase?
One one seven, one one sixteen, excuse me, beginning of the year.
Beginning of this year. And how much was that pay increase for?
Two percent.
Two percent.
Two percent, across the board.
So effectively, um, I'm trying to, I'm trying to average this out. Had you, had you given everybody a two percent increase for the entire year, um, the cost to the village would have been a half a percent higher for six months worth of payroll. Or is this gonna be retroactive to June or is this effective?
Effective, uh, nine eleven sixteen.
And that's in there, my apologies.
That's okay.
Um, so, so can you tell me a little bit about why you decided to approach it this way? As opposed to just coming to us in January saying, look, I'd like a wage increase annually. We'll talk to you in January, of seventeen?
I, I would ask, well, we sort of talked about this at, during the, the committee, uh, meeting, which I attached the minutes. So I'll try to summarize this. So we, during the budget last, last fall, we put ten thousand dollars in, in the budget for a something. We, we thought we're gonna use it to begin the salary study.
Right.
And, and Lisa and I were very upfront with the board at the time and said, that's as much as we can afford. We're trying to stay under the expenditure restraint cap, which we did, we, we have for this year. And, um, so when it went to the committee, some of the committee members, um, took exception that we were just gonna be able to start the study and then finish it in, in seventeen. They wanted to use the money for, um, an adjustment. Let me, let me go back and read the, the minutes. If you actually look at the minutes from, uh, the March twenty-eighth, it was, the, those are the, those were the three options that came out of the committee meeting. And, um, I, I actually had a, but, the PowerPoint from the October twelfth, twenty fifteen, which I talked about, that we were gonna start the, um, possible, um, the study. And it was just, it was just decided to apply this, um, this money to do another wa, uh, wage adjustment in twenty sixteen. And, and honestly, we may end up doing the same thing next year. We're, we're, the goal is to, to get the employees back to the middle part of the, of our compensation or competitive, uh, range with other communities. We've, I know we've slipped because we went through a number of years where we gave out very small raises. That's life, you know, it's, we had to balance budgets. Um, so this whole discussion of, of, uh, do we hire a consultant or do we try to do it internally? Is, we're, we're gonna talk about that again, um, actually next month at the budget meetings.
So I appreciate that overview.
Yeah.
And I, a lot of times when I come to the board, I, I come with my private business experience because that's what I know. And a lot of times I need to understand how government works because it's not the same. But yet, there are some similarities. For example, you know, people dedicate their careers. They choose to dedicate their careers as a public servant, which means that they work in the government sector and they take the good and the bad that goes along with it.
That's right, yep.
Um, people that tend to work in the private sector, same thing, take the good and the bad that goes along with it. From my experience, um, in the private sector, two percent would be, would be what I was used to seeing in the worst parts of the recession, as far as a, as far as a pool for cost of living increases, uh, throughout the recession. Um, now, as things are getting a little bit better in the private sector, we're looking at pools of three percent. Um, and the other piece of this that I think, that I think about when I come here, you know, sitting on several boards of directors is, the executive director or the executive staff are typically thought of in, in a separate category from the rank and file. Um, we don't have that in government, um, but in the private world, when you think of the executive director, there's usually a performance bonus that goes along with, um, the end of the year review. So it's odd for me, and I'm saying this as much for my edification as the, as to just kind of inform you all and the community, why I think the way I think. Um, to try to apply the cost of living increase model from the private to the public sector, I think it's a mistake to assume that because the one point five percent increase is being allocated across the board, that somehow, that's not the, that's not the appropriate way to do it. Because I don't see another way for executive staff to get compensated, um, in the public sector. It's, it's sort of a good for one is good for all kind of a pay environment. Take away step grades and things like that, time in service, which are equally attainable by everybody, should they put in the time.
Yeah. Yeah, we, you, good, very good point. Yeah, we don't give out quote-unquote bonuses in, in government. Some people, some people have given out what's called exemplary performance, you know, employee comes up with a way to save the city or village thousands of dollars and then the, they get a little bonus or something, a little, you know. But that's not, usually it's not going to their base. It's just like a one-time payment of, of like five hundred dollars or something.
And you, and you and the department heads, and I've said this before, and I know that you'll tell me that, you know, it's thanks to, thanks to a great staff and you're a hundred percent right for saying that, right? We all win when we all win.
Absolutely.
Um, but I think when it comes time for compensation, for you to ask for one and a half percent across the board, um, to me is, is a very fair way to approach the recognition that you and your staff work really, really hard to keep this a, a great village, um, where I personally appreciate raising my kids and I appreciate living, um, because I can count on the public services to be here, uh, and support me and my family at, at the level that, um, I don't know if, I think everybody should come to expect, right? Great service from their public departments. And I think a lot of times it's easy to overlook the service that public employees provide or to just assume that somehow we're entitled to great service from public employees and I don't agree with that. I, I think great service comes from dedicated people and I think we're fortunate to have such a good group of dedicated people. And you can't, if you just start to assume that those people are gonna show up and take whatever you give them, I think you're, you're going down the wrong path, you know, because people have options. And working for this village is an option, but it's not their only option. So, in, in closing, I just wanna thank you and your staff for the dedication that you give and that you bring every single day. And I wanna thank you for choosing to spend your careers in the public sector, knowing that you could earn more in the private sector, but you're service-oriented and you're service-minded. And it's my pleasure to award you one and a half percent and I wish I could make it more.
Thank you.
Can I just, uh, ask, okay, we gave them two at the beginning of the year, right? So that, then this would be three, three point five then?
For, for the, it goes into their base, correct?
Into the, and, uh, starting in September now.
It, right, yep. As of, well, as of, yesterday was started at the pay, pay period.
Right, okay.
Yep.
Uh, just to comment that Phil Harms was saying, no, that, that, this is what he was commenting.
Correct.
So, and he thought it was wrong because he thought that, uh, it should be divided between everybody rather.
Right, take the, right, yeah.
Separately, okay.
Yeah, the trend, the trend we're seeing is that, um, in the, in the public sector, right, I actually just shared this with Lisa the other day, that for next year, in, uh, in the area, Dane County communities are looking at, um, one and a half to two percent across the board, so. Um, and actually dur, and during the recession, we never gave out two percent. I think we actually had a year, we didn't give out anything.
Right.
Maybe, and then, and then a one percent, so. So, so other communities were giving bigger raises out, so some of our, well, a lot of our employees have slipped. So we're trying to get, trying to do somewhat, maybe in a frugal way, trying to get our employees back up into the market. So when we do the larger compensation study, it isn't such a big hit. That's, that's sort of the plan we have.
And that's consistent with the way that you've managed the budget since I've come on this board. You're, you're very fiscally minded. You always land a solid budget and you don't overcommit yourself and you've consistently done that. And I think it's an important message for the community to hear, because again, I think it gets overlooked. People get glossy-eyed when you start going through the budget. And, and having worked in private business, you, you can sit down and do a budget today and in June, you can look at a very different set of numbers and everybody recognizes the fact that it's fluid. But I don't think people really appreciate the art that's involved to land a budget where you say you're gonna land a budget, regardless of what comes at you, regardless of a covert collapses, that you can say, I have exigencies in place and I can move this over here, all within state statute, mind you. It's not arbitrary.
You're right.
You know, and we can cover this without having to go back to the taxpayer for special assessments. So.
Another question I had, though, now we have put this money aside, right?
Correct, to the budget.
Yeah.
So it'd be, it'd be coming out of something else.
Yeah, this is a budget item.
Okay.
We did last, last.
I know, our, our social security doesn't go up like that. It would sure be nice.
Yeah.
Mine does, Darlene.
Oh, no.
Okay.
Okay, just, just quickly, I would like to say.
That's for the real.
I fully agree with what Jeff said and it places a high value on good leadership and skills and, and it's important. We have really good department heads. I mean, the folks do a great job.
Yeah.
And, uh, you don't pay people if you don't treat them right. So we have, we have, it's something that is necessary to be done because it's the right thing to do, so.
And I saw.
And I'm like Jeff, I'd like to have more of everybody. I wish we did. We don't.
I, I respect Phil's comments. I always, you know, take them. Absolutely. That's right to make them and it makes a point.
Yeah, presented that well.
I just wanna say I agree with everything Jeff and Darlene and, I don't know if I missed Doug's comments, but, uh, we are very fortunate to have the staff that we have because they really do care about the services they deliver to the community. And I thought that there was more than one year when there was no raise.
Yeah, I think there were two for department heads.
Yeah, it could have been. I don't remember off the top of my.
I agree with Steve. I think there were two.
It could have been like zero, one and zero, something like that, you know.
Yeah, and, and when that was presented, there was no big outcry. They knew that we were in a tough spot. And, you know, the, the message was delivered that we just don't have the money right now because of the recession and, and the staff worked with us. They still continue to do a good job.
Yeah.
And so now it's time to, uh, more or less, as Mike indicated.
We're not, we're not, we're not pushing, we'll never push to be at the top of the range.
No, no.
We're trying to get more in the competitive.
Yeah, and that, that makes sense.
I'm not suggesting it, but times are better now, so we can afford to do a little more, so.
Within reason, as Billy said.
One more thing I'd mention, you know, we've, we've mentioned department heads, but you also have excellent staff that you work with and the rank and file out there to do a great job. We appreciate that.
And you know, Phil makes, I'm sure I, I miss them, but I'm sure I am aware of Phil's counterpoints to that argument. And, you know, that's the great part of a democracy. You, not everybody has to agree for things to work right.
Yeah.
And sometimes it's healthier if people don't agree.
Yeah.
Because it makes both sides stronger. But, uh, again, I, I think this is, I'm glad I got back in time to, to weigh in on this.
Well, thank you for those comments. We appreciate them.
So one last thing I remember for, mentioned before we vote, is that, uh, we're working on the date for the employee appreciation brunch or breakfast or lunch, whatever we do. And when that's set, I'd encourage if you can make it to get there. Because it's really fun and they really appreciate it and it's good food and just a good time, so.
So Michael, be sure to notice it.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, we always do. Okay, so we have that motion to approve the one and a half percent wage adjustment, excluding police union and library employees effective nine eleven sixteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
But just for the record, Nikki, the labor is gonna be doing their employees, just so that.
Yes, um, Wednesday, it'll go for the library board to anyone who hadn't been affected by, um, earlier needed adjustments to do the same one and a half, um, percent.
Okay. That takes us to item five, discussion possible action regarding fold the longevity payment in the existing base wages and delete the longevity section from employee handbook. Uh, there are only fourteen village employees currently on this longevity payment. In two thousand, two thousand one, the board folded longevity payments into base wages for department heads and supervisors and the same approach as recently included the current lease union contract. So the motion, uh, that comes forward as a motion is fold longevity payment in the base wage for remaining employees receiving longevity payments effective one one seventeen and delete the longevity section from the employee handbook. Do you need a second, please?
I'll make that, or, I'll second that.
Thank you.
And, uh, I'll just comment that, uh, this is something we're doing with all the units to blend all the pay skills so that they're always the same.
Yeah.
You know, that way longevity isn't a separate line item. And, uh, pay is the pay, when you look at the salary line item, that will be it.
So, when you say we, who are you referring to?
Us, not the county.
Oh.
I actually know.
I'm trying to figure out what hat you're wearing.
You know, it's kinda interesting.
Our county hat you're wearing there.
Actually. Actually.
Right now, I'm.
Here.
Actually, we got the idea way back in 2000, 2001 from Jerry, get the county started doing this back then. And that's, that's why we did the supervisors way back when.
Yeah, so in some respects, that is an idea brought from the county.
Yep.
Just to simplify the pay skills.
Any further discussion or questions? So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll get to turn the page. Plan of emission from September 1st, again, this is trustee carpenter who's unable to be here, so I will take these and bring these as motions. This is to approve resolution number 16-27, final plan and approval of the amended agreement to undertake development in Oregon Parks neighborhood, and this is, needs to be tabled. We should go to the right man.
Um, well, I mean, there isn't really even a motion pending to table, but the, the developers asked that we suspend consideration of it at this point.
Okay.
It, it definitely will come back, but they're redoing a little bit of their subdivision.
So I don't think any action is required.
Okay, okay, so we'll go to item two.
And now Steve, we, because Jerry's back, we can.
We can do this.
Exactly, yep.
Okay. Discussion possible action approving general development plan, the GDP for the Oregon Manor Campus Project, 336 and 354 North Main and 333 and 337 Soden Drive. The motion, first motion waived first or second readings, move for adoption. This requires a 2/3 vote of the board. And second motion, approve ordinance number 16-31, the general development plan for the Oregon Manor Campus Project, 336, 354 North Main and 333, 337 Soden Drive, so.
I'll make both of those motions.
Uh, there's different voting requirements on them, so I'll do the first vote first, first motion first, that will require all five of you to vote yes, to suspend the rules and move on to adoption tonight, so I would recommend you do it in two steps.
So moved then, well, I'll make the first motion.
We have the mo, it comes as a motion, Jeff, we just need a second.
Good God, it's getting late. I'll, I'll second.
The first motion.
Waiving the first and second readings and move for adoption.
Okay. So any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Yep, now the second motion is to actually adopt the ordinance.
Yeah. And that is a motion, we need a second for motion number two.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
Three, discussion possible action, approval of certified survey map, the CSM for the Oregon Manor Project, same addresses. Motion is to approve that map for that project at 336, 354 North Main and 333, 337 Soden Drive. Need a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item five, discussion possible action regarding approving the rezoning property at 127 Dewey Street, currently zoned single-family residential four, SR4, be zoned to single-family residential five, which is SR5. So the motions, first motion waived first or second readings and move for adoption.
So I'll second the first motion.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We got all five there. Second motion, approve ordinance number 16-30, rezoning the property at 127 Dewey Street, currently zoned single-family residential four, and will be zoned to single-family residential five.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Phil was right, when you step up to that mic, that makes a difference, huh?
Yeah. Okay, more authoritative.
That's awesome.
Discussion possible action, approval of certified survey map, the CSM for the property at 127 Dewey Street. That comes as a motion for us, need a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item seven, discussion possible action is an ordinance repeal section 17-805-5I, create section 17-807, amend section 17-805-4 and 17-831-1G, and amend figure 17-811-2, 3, and end of the Village of Oregon, code of ordinance relating to signs. So first motion waived first or second readings and move for adoption, need a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And then the second motion, approve ordinance number 16-27. Need a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Discussion possible action regarding ordinance number 16-25, amending section 17.905-5A of the Village of Oregon Code of Ordinances relating to notice of public hearings for conditional use permits. First motion waived first or second readings and move for adoption, second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And second motion, approve ordinance number 16-25. Second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the park board, September 7th, 2016, trustee Brett Howard.
Peggy panicking over.
I can't read that fast.
All right, Eric Anderson of the Oregon Soccer Association appeared before the parks board to request permission to use as a backup site the soccer field at Rustic Vineyards. And that motion was approved, recommendation to the board would be to approve that request.
Okay, we're going to wait a second while Peggy re-group.
Who's on first, Peggy? I don't know.
Ask her to repeat everything from the last five minutes.
Okay. The movement to the left.
Okay, so our motion is second on that, approve use of fields at Rustic Vineyards as a backup, and from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number two, Doug, please?
Second item is in regard to the donation of land that was made by the Kelstrom family. And there were two different ideas presented by Mike Slavny, one would be to meet informally with the family and kind of get a sense of what they were looking for in the park, or do a more formal analysis and design. And I think the recommended motion is to approve the latter. So $2,000 for developing the park plan.
I'll second that.
And are those from park funds, Doug?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay, so the family is not paying for that.
Not for that part.
Okay.
So Jerry, did you ask us for color from park funds?
Pardon?
From park funds?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that was.
Actually, I need to think of that, and it's true, we could take it out of park funds.
That's what I assumed.
Is it a new park? Yeah.
The family would pay for some of the improvements.
Right, okay, no, I just was curious about where.
Yep.
You know, we've got that park fund and I'd like to not have.
Jerry missed vouchers, so he's got the itch.
And we're not going back to him.
I know.
No, 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 it's eight o'clock.
No, that was a good, that was a good question.
Lisa was very happy.
I was shocked when I came back and you folks were all still here.
Oh, yeah, long, long meetings.
We took a half hour break.
That's what I was wondering.
Okay, so any discussion on this motion for approving $2,000 for developing the park plan by Kelsters?
That's great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I think we had figured more, we need to talk about that.
Item 10, minutes now requiring action, there are none. Item 11, unfinished business, discussion possible action. Thanks, Matt. Have a good evening. Consideration ordinance number 16-26, creating sections 5.05 and 5.06 regarding fire prevention. First motion to waive second reading and move for adoption.
I'll second the wave of the second reading and make the motion to move for adoption.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And then another one is to actually approve the ordinance number 16-26.
I'll second.
We need a motion on that too, I guess.
Yep.
I should move.
It's a change, please. So second, Jeff?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I'm confused too. Any questions on this?
We're out of committee work, that's the problem.
Yeah, I know.
Jeez, when did that happen?
We're switching gears here fast. I'm getting back up to speed, you better look out. So all in favor of this?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 12, new business, there is none. Item 13, approval of pending new operator licenses, these are approved by the police department, Aces May Tap, Sheila Larson at Bill's Food Center, Ross Burns Kinchi, and a QuickTrip 731, Lindsay Zentz. So need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Approval of pending renewal operator licenses, there are none before us, 15 lists future agenda items, and 16 is that magic moment, motion for.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. We are done. Thanks, everyone.[1171.52] Thanks, everyone.